Good evening and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, June 22nd, 2017. If we could all please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I know I had a difficult time getting out of the house because I'm thinking it's summer. And I had no kids at home, but I was still having a difficult time leaving the house. So, thank you for coming out. So, when, in order to start the meeting, I just want to take care of the consent agenda, which I will make a motion to approve. Regular session minutes of June 8th, 2017. Governance minutes of May 26th, 2017. Budget and finance minutes of June 5th, 2017. And acceptance of warrants 51 v. 17, 52 v. 17, 50 p. 17, and 52 p. 17.
So, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to talk about anything on the agenda this evening? No student in rep tonight. So, you asked Superintendent before we went on.
Yes, because we have a couple of things here. I just was curious as to what order.
I'm fine with, is there someone that needs to... Get out of here?
I don't know which one I want to answer that. No, Mr. Lucia, you're not in the group. It's not your choice, Mr. Lucia. She's referring to the other guests.
Anyone with a real burning need to leave. Don't be shy.
All right, why don't, well, why don't we do the makerspaces first? I think that will be fairly quick.
Okay, so Liz, Mike.
Liz, Mike.
Mary Ann.
Mary Ann.
It's exciting.
Yes, very excited.
Thank you guys for coming out.
Okay, so, as, as, I think you've been sort of following, we're very excited that we are able to, we're starting to open our makerspaces next year. And of course, it's the first year of anything, so, you know, it'll evolve over time. But, there's, these, these ladies are the ones that'll be sort of the, you know, the overseers of the maker space. But in each school, there'll be a team of people who are very excited about it and, you know, will, will be sort of championing, championing, championing it. I know at Pembroke, the librarian, Georgie Fazio, is very excited about it. Barry, Heidi Beegan, Monica McGinnis. There's a number of people, and I know at the middle high school, you know, Amanda Gerard's been very excited about it. I'm trying to, Sherry Patel.
Sherry Patel.
Christine Fogarty. You know, so, the goal is to get the spaces up and running and then have them be integrated into the curriculum as well. So, looking for places where there can be classes that can come. So, I just, you know, what, what do you want to say about where we are? So, I did mention in the orange notes that we'd be able to talk about sort of the location of where we're looking to, to have the spaces. Sort of the status of the materials and supplies, like what do we have, what do we need? Any summer projects that we're working on, any partnerships that we've been working on, and anything that we need. So, I think just a couple of minutes to speak to that would be great.
Okay. Well, so, for, at GMHS right now, our space is on the third floor in one of the science rooms that is not going to be utilized as a science room next year. So, that's going to be our main location. There's going to be some things happening in the library. But the third floor location is going to be the main place right now. So, we spent the day actually today cleaning out that location. And so, it is ready to go for Mr. Anderson and his crew to come on in and clean it head to toe. There's lots of dust in there right now.
So, why doesn't it need to be used for science next year?
Is there less science?
Mr. Lucia will be there.
Because, um, we, we, we had a .6 science teacher there and we kind of consolidated that into one position. And the one science class that there is, well, let me just say it this way, it freed up a room. Because there were two people each having.
So now, you're still going to offer the same.
Yeah, the same.
Science, number of science classes, but.
Has not decreased. And then, yeah, the nice thing about that room is there's a closet in the back, so it's, there's storage. And there's plenty of built-in cabinets as well as shelf space. And there are lab tables. So, when, when kids want to begin working on projects, there's stools there and they can actually literally be, be working. Plus, there's an area where the desks, desks where we can put some machinery or some, some work tables, you know, as well. So, that, you know, that actually offered us, the library's a great space and we want to use it for some more circuitry, robotics, those kind of things that are thinking oriented as opposed to tinkery, messy oriented. Because we have that library carpet and, you know, so we, we thought that we'd start there and that space would, would be our sort of main, main area.
So, as far as supplies, where we're at, we've gotten a great deal of donations through the community. People have been dropping things off, which has been overwhelming and awesome all at the same time, so that's amazing. We did get a donation from Georgetown Electric that they are going to be funding ours, a portion of our circuitry work, which has been amazing. Home Depot actually donated just yesterday a little over $500 in tools.
Wow.
Yep. And they said that they will certainly do more once their new fiscal year begins. We just have to present them with another letter. And they're willing to have an open relationship with if there's something that comes up. We just need to let them know and if they can help us, we will. They said anything we need as far as scrap material is concerned, stuff that they just throw out on a regular basis such as wood or scrap PVC pipe or screen. They said they have a lot of screens from cutting and trimming screens that they could just save it and bring it on over to us, which is.
They would deliver it too?
Yeah, there's a couple of parents in town that have worked at Home Depot in Danvers for 16, 17 years. So, they've graciously offered to bring stuff to us.
Wow, that's great.
Which has been amazing. And we're reaching out to a couple other people for some, you know, other specific items that are aligned to those businesses' standards and missions. So, so we're doing wonderful on our end. All the grant supplies and machineries have been ordered to date. A lot of it has been received. Still waiting on a few things to come in. And then, once the room is cleared, we'll be bringing it all in.
Bring it up.
And starting to bring it to life and unpacking and setting things up and, you know, changing the layout of the room if need be.
Are there plans, you know, so you're going to have all this stuff? Is it just like their own creativity or their actual plans that they will be able to follow to make things?
Both.
Okay.
I say very, very delicately to the planned aspect because the ultimate mission and objective behind a maker space is for students to go in and tinker and explore. Through the creativity course, I found in the past five years of teaching it that students have a very hard time today utilizing design thinking and the creative problem solving process to go into a problem open-ended. They almost require step-by-step instructions and that's exactly what we don't want to give them.
So, it'll be controlled chaos?
It, it is controlled chaos. If you've ever visited my room during build week for the creativity showcase, it is controlled chaos. And I always apologize to everybody before build week because you'll walk into my room and kids will be doing everything, everywhere, anytime. And it's going to look pretty messy. But at the end of the day, they know exactly where everything is and they're going through this own process. So, yes, you want to have some things to encourage kids to utilize the space and accomplish a specific objective. But you also want to allow the freedom of thought throughout the process because part of the creativity process is seeing what's going to happen at the end. And if we dictate the steps too much, they're going to end exactly where we want them to end, not exactly where they would have ended had we not dictated that to them. So, which is hard for me as the teacher to let go of some of the control and see what happens. But as I've learned to do that in the creativity class, I've found that the more control you let go, the better the projects become at the end of the day.
Is there sort of in the same vein, and I totally get not the step-by-step, but is there a, for lack of a better word, a list of idea problems to solve? Like, it's not, I don't, the, the creativity class, there's a curriculum, there's, they are building something to accomplish the goal which is defined.
They solve their own problem in the creativity class.
Correct.
Yes.
But it's a guided.
Yes.
It's, it's not just walk into a room and go.
No.
So, there's a problem to be solved and they solve it on their own.
Yes.
A grammar type of problem to be solved is.
Yes.
Well, you might have a monthly challenge that says, make something you can wear that lights up. Right? Or you could, you know, we were talking about this robot that we want to buy, you know, sort of giving them challenges on what they can do with a robot. Can you find a way to do this? Can you figure out a way to do this? And there's more than one path to do it. Because like, we met with, we met with Phil Trapani and Boris Tabinkin the other day. Because, you know, they work for technology companies, so we were trying to pick their brains on, you know, where we might be able to go to ask for, for help or would their, would companies like theirs want to partner with us and those kind of things. And that was one of the things Boris said, is that he finds out even in the, in the field he's in that even the young people that are coming in, out of college programs, coming in sometimes have a hard time sort of not, sort of knowing exactly where to go with something. So, you know, the, the goal here is to try to give kids what they need. And so, there'll be some more support for kids that need more support, kids helping kids with certain things. But it, you know, it's a balance, right? It's a, it's a balance. But yeah, I don't, I don't envision, kids are just going to go in there and all of a sudden, they're going to look at the stuff and say, I have no idea what you want me to do with this. That's not the plan.
No, there'll be a goal and.
There'll be many challenging things that they can choose from.
There may be STEM activities to choose from or something that lead them, you know, particularly the younger students.
The youngers will have more guidance.
They're going to have, yeah.
Hand them power tools and let them go to town.
Yeah.
He's a buzzsaw.
That's the beauty of the whole maker space concept is that it can be highly directive to teach certain concepts or highly just creative, open, open-ended.
Create something that.
What would you like, what's your vision? What would you like to create? What would you like to do?
Right. Right.
Even, obviously, like the creativity class is sort of where it's, you're highlighting it. But I could see in a ELA class, the teacher's reading a book, the character has this problem. Off to the maker space you go to figure out what you can make to help solve the character's problem.
Problem, right, exactly.
It can.
Or in history, you know, something that demonstrates the way of life or, or tools that certain people use at certain times and places.
Or make a cotton gin.
Yeah.
So, actually, there was, there is a lesson with the Gutenberg press, actually, in history that I saw a maker, high school maker space utilized when they were learning what the Gutenberg press was. They actually had to go into their maker space and create their own Gutenberg press. Because when you read about a Gutenberg press, it's so, you know, it's such a weird concept for these kids to realize.
Sounds like a printer?
Yeah, they're like, what, so it's like a printer? No, it's not a, it is a printer, but it's not like what you're thinking. And they all had to manufacture their own Gutenberg press. And they were like, wow, this is actually what it is.
Was.
Or was, or is, yeah, so.
And Mike, what are you doing?
I'm just.
Just sitting there reading quiet.
I see your name attached to it and I'm like, and you're going to.
I collect sewing machines.
Yeah, Mike's, Mike's a runner for us.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
I thought maybe you're going to, you know, be in one of the classes with your expertise.
Oh, he is.
Oh, you remain wealthy.
He's going to do a lot of safety instructions for different tools and, yes, he just doesn't know all that.
Go-to guy.
We're just going to put things where they need to go.
I, one of the things I can't wrap my head around is when are the kids going to go?
Yeah.
Like, is it going to be open all day? Who's going to be manning it? Who's, you know?
So, um.
Going to be booking it?
Will teachers sign up for it?
Yes, yeah, so that's going to evolve over time. Just like we have the computer lab set up, there'll be sign-ups for it. Just like a teacher would sign up a computer lab and go on in, they'll sign up the maker space and go on in. So, it will be open all day and it, when a teacher comes in to utilize the maker space, you know, at the beginning, my plan is to be there. You know, because utilizing a space, a big thing of managing the space is putting everything back where it goes, you know, and having proper fleet of time. And also, understanding how to utilize the machines. Not everyone will know how to use a lot of the machines that are going to be in there, so there's going to be a great deal of instruction for the teacher side of it at first. So, any teacher is going to be able to come in. When Ms. Vera does Wuthering Heights, she can come in. There's a lot of great maker space lessons and utilizing maker space when they're teaching Wuthering Heights. So, she could come in during that to teach them whatever it is and then I'll be there to help her.
And before and after school.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so it's going to be open before and after school?
Yep, so they'll be open at a time.
So, there'll be a teacher there?
Well, that's what we're, that we're talking about, either, either Liz will be there or we're talking about the library, the library assistant that we, that we have. We might assign her, if there's nobody in the library, might assign her to the maker space for a half hour after school. So, people are there because we do want it to be supervised.
And yeah, definitely needs to be supervised.
And is the same thing going to happen over at Pembroke? So, it'll be before and after?
We haven't decided.
Well, before and after is Elizabeth Carroll, the extended day program children could use.
She'll use it.
Oh, okay.
Well, it can also be enrichment, like I can hold that as enrichment class, like I do Lego robotics now, coding.
Yeah.
So, it could be a couple of days a week of that as well.
And so, where is yours going to be?
It's on the second floor next to the art room and close to the library. So, there will be one in the library and then one in this room. And then, that affords me the chance, the opportunity to use the art room if needed. When it's not in use, I can also go in there and there's a kiln in there, which is, which is very cool. So, it'll be in, in that room. And Mike arranged for tables and stools to come in and, and remove the desks. So, and I started, Liz took me to a great place and started building a stock of some inventory. And I do have contacts, but I've been teaching and testing and, and working in this job. I haven't had a chance to talk to those contacts who I think I can get some supplies or a partnership with. But the teachers are very enthusiastic, you know, we have our new science curriculum as well. And they're, so they made the leap saying, I can't wait to work with you on all the new science equipment. So, that is a great tie-in for maker space and helping facilitate that as well.
Right. Okay, and how about the kids? How the students excited?
I haven't really, I haven't mentioned that.
Well, Heidi, Heidi. Yeah, high school kids, actually, Phil was mentioning that a lot of his son, his friends' sons and actually Martin Cole Pepper, who's also helping us, had said that his children are very interested in it. So, they're, they're, he's, they're believing that if there is an opportunity for kids to go into the space here, that they'll really be excited about it.
And I have five kids that asked if they could come in over the summertime to help me. So, they know the weeks that I'm planning on being there, you know, start to finish each day. So, they're going to come during that time. And three of those kids could actually do a lot of the work with setting up the machines because they helped me manage some of the machines that we already have. So, that will be pretty easy for them to just set these four printers up and get them online and get them working. So, so there's already five kids that I know that are going to come over the summer to help me, so, which is awesome.
Yeah.
Could you use more or is that going to be?
Absolutely, yeah, I have, um, two of them, actually, beyond the five, I have two of the seniors that graduated this year that want to come back and help. So, because they know me and they know how I, my brain works and how I like things organized. So, they offered to come in before they leave for school in August to help me organize some of the, you know, consumable supplies just because they know how, you know, it will work.
There's still like few that understand.
There's a few that understand my organization.
We do need some money for things like a couple of 3D printers. We were looking at some.
Well, I was just seeing that. Is that the money that you're asking for?
Yeah, on the, on that, that was one of the things we'd like to use some of the money for.
For a 3D printer?
For a 3D printer or, you know, some more robotic kind of things, looking at the Spheros.
What is that?
The Spheros are like.
The Sphero is a little robot and it's about the size of a tennis ball. And it's programmable through an app that's down, you can download it to any of your phones and write code and program it.
Makey Makeys, there's a number of those kind of machines that, those little things that are, you know, really kind of cool because kids have to figure out how to manipulate the circuitry and can do all kinds of interesting things. I mean, I've seen the Makey Makeys, they're, they're really.
Yeah, that, I know the elementary school.
And you can do hundreds and hundreds of projects with one kit, or a small.
They're not cheap, the little kits aren't cheap, right? So, you want to have enough kits so that, you know, kids can use it. So, we do have some grant funds which we're utilizing. And we have a couple of private family donations which we're also utilizing. So, that's great. We, but we do have things like buy containers to put things in that we can label, you know, so there's a, there's just some of, or we'd like some s- small tool, small little machines, like there were kids, we're getting some sewing machines, as you know, I told you that already. But even some small tools that you can. Little dr- yeah, I don't know.
Tabletop.
You know, little, little things like that, that, you know, kids would need to learn to be trained on, but then would be able to utilize, so.
So, the, um, the signup genius that you sent out, did that get all full or?
Um, a lot, yeah, we got a lot of donations from that. I haven't seen what specifically at your, in your space, but.
We got a few.
Yeah, we got a ton at the high school that we're going to go through and organize and then some of it's going to go to Pembroke.
We probably need to make, that's where Mike comes in, probably need to make a trip down to that place that we got that subscription to where you can.
Yeah, we already loved. Oh, you've already been to that? Is that the place you were talking about?
We've, I've been a couple of times.
That sounds very interesting.
It, it actually is a wonderful place. It's something that I would strongly recommend to any teacher. So, you, and you can buy organizational subscriptions to it. But we each individually have an individual membership, which allows us to go to the space six times within a calendar year. And you can take as much as you want to, within reason, because if you empty the shelves, there's nothing there. But I took 66 pounds last time, you took 67 or something, we were like right at the same mark. And this place operates where they get federal funding by saving, you have to weigh your stuff so they can report to the government how much they avoid sending to landfills. And businesses donate to them, it's extras. It used to be in Lynn, but now it's in Peabody on Pulaski Street.
So, you know how Georgetown sometimes, or maybe a couple of times a year, has the bring your electronics here? Why, is that?
It's, no, it's not like that. This is every.
Is that a place you could go to and maybe take a few items as well?
Right.
I just cleaned my garage.
Really, come to my garage, take what you want.
That's what happened to me, I had two, two.
But there are only so many.
I had two computer towers.
And yeah, as long as anything electronic that we get donated, as long as, as long as it has no mercury in it, I'm fine. That's why we can't accept laptops because they have mercury.
I wouldn't think you'd want too many old.
Yeah, so as, as long as we know that there's no mercury in them, we can pretty much take any.
Because that would be another good place. I know they do it twice a year and I can't remember.
Yeah.
I know it's coming up, right? Or did we already have it?
I think we already had it because the signs usually had St. Mary's that I noticed it.
Heidi Beegan has 90 kids registered for Camp Invention this year.
Wow. What was the number last year?
60.
Oh, that's good.
Goes up every year.
So, I, I think there's a, there'll be an interest in this and, and there'll be a need.
And students, some younger students have those robots at home and don't know how to use them. And they bring them into me to help, help because it's just sitting there from Christmas. So, they bring them in and then, one student actually was a guest star in our video morning announcements and showed how she programmed it.
She already do coding classes as part of what you're doing.
Right, right, but that wasn't, that particular thing was from home, not my coding class, but she took those skills. And so, I hope to have more guests like that in the morning announcements to kind of show something that they know how to do.
Do we have a sense of what sort of ongoing cost is going to be? I know lots being donated and, and all these things, but clearly, it's not going to be free.
No, it's not. It's definitely not. I, I would say, year after year, we're going to need batteries. You know, we're going to need the consumable supplies. We'll need filament, we'll need ink.
Soluble.
Paper, yeah, I mean, yes, there, it's not.
Batteries of all sizes?
Uh, batteries of all sizes, but primarily coin batteries, so 3V batteries. 9 volts and double As I would say are the three.
Top.
Top ones. You can do anything with those three. But some things will require triple A or C or D. But for the most part, if you have coin batteries, 9 volts and double A batteries, you can pretty much make any LED light up. So, you're pretty good to go. That's another thing, I mean, the little LED lights, they're teeny tiny. They'll burn out eventually, you know, kids will have turned them on too many times. So, they'll be consumable products like that. Even a lot of the wearable circuitry work, a lot of the wearables are on stickers. So, you stick them, you use them. You can peel some of them off and reuse them a couple of times, but eventually, the stickiness is going to die, the LED is going to die. You know, that $110 worth of supplies is, is gone. It will need to be replaced, so.
Now, do you have more questions?
Well, I guess sort of to that end, is there, do we have money budgeted for?
We don't in the first year because.
And I get we have to figure it out. I, I certainly understand that.
Well, we have to know what we need, but.
In the first year, we don't because we, we, you know, obviously, if we can get some money upfront and we have these donations, the first year is really just covered. But going forward, right, we will have to identify a budget for it and a funding source for it.
And a lot of the donations, when I've been talking to people, that's been part of the conversation, that it's going to be a continuous year after year contribution, so.
Does it grow up into a first robotics team?
It might, it might.
Good, some schools have.
I'm not going to answer that question, definitely. But, but eventually, yes.
I thought that was pretty definitive.
Unofficially.
I just don't want to, I don't want to promise that for this year.
No, no.
We visited too, they said that donations just kept pouring in year after year.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, because it's cool stuff. And there are some small technology engineering firms in town. So, it's, it's utilizing some of the resources that we have here that, this supports their mission. You know, Georgetown Electric was over the moon.
They were like, we'll, we'll help you even more than this, but this is what you're asking for right away.
We will come in and help and teach and we're so excited that these kids are going to learn what we do and.
Yeah, that's great.
Terry Pilardi said she'd be happy to come in and do sewing, you know, teach the kids some sewing. And, and so, yeah, because one of the things that you read about is these expert makers, you know, people who, who do this for a living. Like, I'm thinking of Chris Rup, remember we met him?
Yeah.
You know, he, he'd be somebody from town that, you know, he was a designer, you know, woodworker, you know, come in and help with some of those things. So, they did say in some of these, like, having lessons, having classes, you can actually invite people to come in and, and go to a class. So, that's one of the ways to get kids in the door. Right, because you're right, some people, kids don't have any knowledge at all about this. They've never, like, they've never touched circuitry stuff. The other thing that Phil was very interested in is, because it's, their company's very interested in it, is this whole notion of girls in STEM. You know, running some programs just for girls, you know, so there's just a lot we can do. We just have to, we all have great ideas, we just have to sort of funnel them and focus them. But I think step one is getting it up and running. And then, we'll, you know, we'll make, we'll make it work from there. But I wanted, I wanted these guys to come and, and, you know, have a chance to talk with you because they're, they really have already been doing yeoman's work. And I know this will be successful because of these ladies and the teams of people at the schools that are excited. This'll be successful because of these ladies and the teams of people at the schools that are excited and committed to this. So thank you very much for coming out tonight, but also for all that you're doing. Looking forward to seeing what the summer's gonna bring.
I just like, speaking of, of summer, so Mrs. Ferrell, do you, would you have need for any, uh, community service teenagers to help you over the summer?
I would. I, my own children are coming.
They're cooking community service hours. That's not fair.
No, they can put it out as a community service.
Yeah.
So how do they reach out to you?
You know, if they get in touch with you, maybe in August would be better than July or.
Is your email? My e- yeah, my email, I'm going to be working quite a bit this summer, so.
But does that have, does community service has to go through the approved channels of the high school?
You know, if people were to donate their time for the.
Well, I'm thinking of, one of the high schools are the only one, we're kids.
It's.
This would be community service when.
Yeah, this is community service, but you cannot perform community service during the school day.
Yeah, so it's a summer time.
No, but this is a summer time.
No, but it's a summer, so, but what I'm saying is, so there were, you know, something like that, that would be an approved.
Absolutely.
Community service, okay. Just wanna make sure they fill out the forms properly.
Excellent.
So when, when would the best time be in the summer for something like that?
Um, well, for me, um, I don't, we haven't talked about our common time, but I know for me, the last two weeks in July. Um, and there'll be two weeks in August, definitely.
Could we, could we post something like that on Facebook?
Yeah, yeah.
If you're interested, you know, here's sometimes where you could get.
Get it out to the kids.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the kids know how to reach out to me and then I can get them in touch with Mrs. Ferrell too.
That way they'd be learning about maker spaces and they'd be helping you and they're feeling good about their contribution.
Well, it's an investment for them too.
Yep.
Yeah, that's great. We do appreciate all that you're doing to make it happen. I know it's, it's definitely passion for you guys. I can see it.
Thank you so much.
Um, Mike, you too. But it is exciting and it was something, woo, it was something that I definitely had a hard time wrapping my brain around. Like when we talked about it a couple of years ago, I had to like do all this research. I'm like, what are they talking about? And now it just seems like every time you pick up a magazine.
Yeah.
An education magazine, that, that's what they're talking about. So I think it's great that Georgetown is entering into this world. Um, now, when the kids go back to school in the fall, I mean, they just left yesterday. I hate to, I already talked about it.
Yes.
But you're going to, in the beginning, hel- uh, have a, have time with the teachers, so they're familiar with it. And then, what, like a couple of weeks into it, it would all of a sudden be.
Well, that's why we have to talk about, cause they're, that's why we needed integration specialists. So these ladies are, are also, I saw, you told her in Orange House. These, and Sha- and Sandra's house also, because they're gonna be, if they're not available for the teachers and they, they don't, they're, it won't work.
Right.
Or, or available for the kids. So, you know, I think we're gonna have to do an introduction and, you know, maybe have a couple of open house kinda things where kids can drop by.
Yeah, I'd love to do that too.
We'll have open houses and I know the, all seven of the creativity classes, um, will be able to go in there right away and start utilizing the space, um, for doing some of the activities that we do in our classroom. We'll be able to utilize the maker space, um, effectively to do that, so.
Awesome.
Yeah, probably on day two, we'll be, creativity will be up in the maker space, so.
That's great.
Yep.
So you're wasting a day.
Gotta go through the syllabus.
That's good. That's great.
Thank you so much, lady. Well, appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Enjoy the summer.
Thanks. So Mike, you just sit right there. All right, you know what? Let's do the, let's do the Gmail, cause that, that's the, okay, so then, then we have the ladies for the, for the food service, which might take it just a little longer because they'll have questions. Come on up, Ben and Colin. You've never met Ben, have you?
I have not.
This is Ben Rubino.
Hi, Ben. Nice to meet you.
Hi there. Thank you for coming. Ben is our boots on the ground guy who, you know, whatever we need, Ben's there. He's very, very talented. And you have children in the district, so he's a Georgetown.
How old are your children?
They're five and seven.
Oh, how old?
Ben's been a great, as I told him the other day, he's been a great asset, you know, everybody speaks positively, whatever they need, he, he, he does a great job. So again, thank you again for coming out tonight. So I'm gonna let these guys talk about the transition that we've been making, particularly in the area of email. I think, um, I might have explained in, in this document, but I also explained in the latest grapevine to the teachers, you know, with Ben's help, like, why we're, why we're going in this direction, what are the things we're trying to accomplish and why, why is it necessary for us to work in this direction? So maybe just, if you guys could just talk a little bit about, um.
Yeah, I mean, I think the message you put in the grapevine kinda hit the, the points pretty clearly. I think the first kind of reason was to eliminate a lot of confusion that was going on between emails in Georgetown. Um, everyone, I think, has at least two email addresses. Some people have as many as five with all of the different aliases. And some of those.
Yeah.
Forward to one another. Others, people have multiple mailboxes to check and other people only check one mailbox and let the other one lay dormant. And then maybe getting messages that they're not aware of. Um, so I think we wanted to first and foremost, clean things up and make, uh, make a decision as far as what's one username and email that people can use, that they can also use for some of the other systems that they log into. Like their, um, iLearning plan through Oasis and their Atlas login for their curriculum documents and just try to have kind of a more seamless process for logging in.
So it's like one login and it opens everything up?
Ide- yeah, ideally, um, and that will, that will, uh, that will take some time to.
But it would not be the.
Great visions is that.
It'll be last name. It'll be the K-12. It will be.
Yeah, last name, first initial.
Okay, cause that is the most simp- like, simple way for t- for parents and.
That's what we thought as well. Yeah, and, and we also thought, because some people, if their first name is, is it Mike dot Anderson or is it Michael dot Anderson?
Right.
Or is it Ben Rubino or is it Benjamin Rubino? Or like, it's, it, it was, there was some gray areas there, so we figured last name, first initial. That's it. You know how to reach us.
But, so the people.
And if there's a second one of those, they lose.
Yeah. Well, that is the question I have, because there is a teacher at the high school.
It would be their first, their first two initials of their first name, right? So it would be, you know, Johnson.
It's like Guy Prescott, it's just Prescott, no G.
Well, he's gonna be.
Yeah.
Oh, is he really? Oh, so that's why he doesn't answer. I'm sending it to G. Prescott. I knew it. I knew there was a reason, a good reason.
Uh, so that was kinda the first reason of, of tackling this issue, because it, it had been a sense of frustration from a lot of people that we talked to, teachers, myself, and just kinda anybody who wants to send a message. If you wanna send it, you gotta make sure you're sending it to the inbox that either is compatible with the Google document that you're sharing or you, the one that you know that they actually check. And that's.
Not always the same.
Not always the same. So, um, that was kinda the first thing. The, the second one was, I think maybe you can speak to this more, was the, the storage aspect of our email and our servers and what we currently have in place versus what Google can offer. So I don't know, Ben, if you wanna speak more to that?
Our current systems, we definitely have a, a pretty robust email system in-house, but as our storage needs increase, if we wanna be able to save ten years of every email we've ever got, that's a really big ask to store anything in-house. And Google, you can store as much as you want. It's unlimited. Someone deletes something from a mailbox on the backend in the administration, I just say, take it from out, out of the inbox, but don't really delete it. Just leave it there for legal discovery. Uh, so it allows us to keep so much stuff and access it whenever we want.
So storage, archiving.
Uh, yeah, full archiving as far as emails and storage, also as far as cloud-based storage, right? We have an H drive on, on our servers right now where teachers can store files, um, to access through different computers on the, on the network. But using the Google Drive, that's also unlimited storage for educational platforms. So all of our teachers, um, all of our students, all of our administrators have really unlimited cloud storage that they can access from any device that is connected to the web. So you can, you know, save things somewhere and pull it from, from anywhere. Um, and that includes Google Docs certainly, but any other type of document, you can save it just like you would save to anything on your desktop or on a external hard drive or whatever. You can save any document to the cloud, um, that is also backed up by Google and.
Yeah, the whole security thing because it's backed up offsite, um, on, on, on constant basis.
Yep, anything happens to any of the systems in-house, the buildings, anything, it's still always accessible. You can just, if you have an internet, internet connection, you can get your information.
There'll be no need to pay for upgrades or backup equipment or whatever, you know.
Can we still use Outlook ninety-seven or whatever?
Well, we're, 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 we're working on, on, um, the process, because there are some folks who feel very strongly that they like the interface of, of Outlook. And so these guys have figured out a way where, you know, people that wanna have a, a plugin, I guess you called it, right? A plugin can still do that. Um, you know, our, our goal is to try to get people to use it and to have accessibility. We don't wanna see a, a change in people's a- uh, ability to get what they need. The other, the la- the other reason, the last reason was, we're trying to create more of a collaborative environment. And so, you know, the, the ability in, in Google Docs to share documents and, and work, you know, Suzanne, I know you have a lot of experience with that and you've said many times that you see that as being very beneficial. And, you know, many, many, many of our teachers now, you know, are, are doing that more and more. So, you know, the fact that you don't, you, it's just a, it's a kind of an intuitive process of being able to share and collaborate is also one of our, our motivations for.
That was one of the things that I thought was great. And people work much faster than the speed of IT. They just do. And if you need to wait for me to set up a share so that you can get everyone access with Google, you just, I want, I want you to see this. And it's, it's great. It's wonderful what they've done.
And it goes for our students too, right? If we're, we're doing a one-to-one initiative, we have, you know, we're ordering new iPads for the fourth grade at Penbrooks. Now four, five and six are essentially one-to-one. I mean, we want our students to collaborate digitally as well as, you know, face-to-face. So they can do that with each other in groups. They can share documents and turn in assignments with their teachers now if we're all on the same email platform. And it's just kinda, everything now will work together as opposed to trying to piecemeal things or find kinda cutest routes to get to where we wanna go.
So, so now it says here that this, uh, transition will not take place until January twenty eighteen. And now I've got my Microsoft Outlook email, which I'm not in love with. I'm very happy to give it up. I can't attach this. I, I have to go into my personal and if I wanna attach a document and send it off and I CC myself on the Microsoft Outlook, but I can't, anyway, it's.
I think Mike can help you.
When you log in, you gotta do the light version instead of saying it's your own PC.
Like at that sign in.
We'll help you with that thing.
At sign-in stage.
It's supposed to work, doesn't it?
Yeah. Well, I, I don't, I don't like it, so I'm looking forward to the Google. Google sounds great to me. But so what's going to happen with that? Is it just gonna be turned off and then I'll have another, I'll have a Google?
We talked about having a thirty day soak grace period where both would work, just so people.
An Appleme, okay.
Yeah.
All it means is, instead of going to that webpage to log in, you, you can go to Google and you're gonna type one quiz P at Georgetown and your password. Just like if you have a regular Gmail account.
Right, right.
Sorry.
You're right on.
That's fine, you're right on. Uh, the kids though, the kid, the kids though, we're gonna have the georgetownschools.net.
Yeah.
So that's, we kinda decided to leave.
And the same, the last name and their first initial?
Whatever it's currently configured as, which is, I think is a graduation year and an.
I think it's, I think. Oh, oh, yeah.
It's, it's something a little more non-standard, so they can't be easily identified by any.
Whatever they're currently have. We were trying not to change, we were trying not to change what currently exists already. Cause we didn't wanna, we were trying to have fewer balls bouncing around. So we figured, we'll let the kids stay with what they've got now currently. Cause they've been assigned that. And many of our people already have the K-12, already use the K-12. Well, it was really only in the last few years when Wes was, was helping us transition to more Google, that all of these other emails kinda came in. And so we think it's easier to sort of straighten that up on the adult end and leave the kids where they are.
And the reason for the time is to give us time, get everything straight, straightened out.
Train the teachers.
All goes smoothly and people know. Is it gonna be a PD day?
That's, that's why February first, because there's a half-day PD on January thirty-first. At Middle High School, it was already tagged as a tech integration day, so I will adjust the Penbrook and Purley PD schedule as well to make that a full district tech integration, email training. You know, hopefully by that time, we will have met with all the people face-to-face and worked with our, you know, our technology integrationists could do some Tech Tuesday workshops or some, you know, Google Basic trainings for people that are really, that it's a new system for them. But hopefully the idea is giving us that first semester to make sure that every T is crossed, every I is dotted, so that when we, Ben clicks that switch.
It's really just a non-event.
Yeah, it's, it just, it just happens.
Okay.
Teachers would appreciate that, yes.
Is there any ongoing cost savings? I would imagine mail servers and licenses and stuff like that, but is it?
Quite a bit. Um, currently our, we have a little bit left on the hardware where our internal systems are. But in twenty twenty, our exchange server needs to be relicensed. And I believe the way Microsoft is going, they're going to more of a subscription model. Um, and to license exchange, the last quote I got was, was ten dollars per teacher and sixty-one cents per student. So, and that's per year.
Right.
So that cost is gone.
Right.
Wow.
That would add, and replacing the hardware, we were trying to, if we're to try to put the same hardware in places we have today, the hardware we have, even though it's aging, it's, it's pretty solid hardware. Uh, it would be expensive to put the same caliber of hardware in again.
Right, and we were talking to Red about all that, remember, about the server costs and all that stuff? And what it was cost to, to purchase some kind of a device to, uh, to archive.
Right.
Where we talked about the cost that, that, that's why we haven't done it, because we haven't had the money to do it.
And the nice thing is it's Google text for a live, like, if it goes down, you call Google, it's not, Ben, uh.
Yep, likes that idea too.
Well, I started using Google Docs a couple of weeks ago, um, working with the PTA.
Oh.
And so I kinda gave myself a little crash course in it and I'm sure there's things that I don't know how to do yet, but I feel like it's pretty user-friendly. I mean, it's pretty user-friendly. And, um, we're working on the auction, so we have a list of companies that we're looking to get donations. And depending on who's doing it, they'll, you know, I'll open the document, oh, so-and-so.
It's all color-coded too.
Yeah, you know, so, oh, they, they are tapped into this company. Oh, great, they sent this. Or, oh, look, that one came in. So everybody see, can see the same document and you can change, you know.
Version control.
Right, it's a, it's, you know, so you can communicate through that really effectively, so.
I was, I've been impressed. A learning curve, but you know, we're just thinking that it makes sense for the district in terms of, from a financial standpoint, from efficiency standpoint, for all the reasons that Colin explained, you know. Um, but I wanted you to, I want, I told you about it a little bit before, just that this was what we were moving toward. I thought before we go away for the summer and stuff starts getting done, it would be good to have people come in and talk a little bit more with you and allow you to ask any questions. But the teachers know it's, that, that's just the teachers, the staff knows it's coming. And, and, and our goal is, now that we have a really solid tech team in place and we have the integration specialists, there should be plenty of support for people as they're making the transition, so. Those things are in place now, which they might not have been a year ago.
Oh, that's good, because support is good.
Might be helpful if we went to the professional development.
Yep, well, you, we'll definitely do some training for you if possible.
We can have our own.
Since we'll be using it too.
Let's have our own. We'll definitely give you your own. Okay, well, thank you very much, guys.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, our food service ladies, come on up. Mike, sit down.
Sit down.
Mike, stay right there.
He is. All right, Lena.
We should just have a permanent seat there for you.
My son has a barrel, I believe, earlier.
He did. I'm gonna have to stay late, is he?
Go home, Mike.
Are you sure?
Thank you, ladies, for being patient and waiting. I appreciate it very, very much.
I wonder if Tony said that to you with that face.
Actually, I might, for Tony, I might.
Actually, you don't have to allow me to leave. I can say I'm leaving.
Yes, you can. You can.
You're a big girl.
You're a big girl. So thank you for waiting. Sorry.
No worries.
You know, you're very patient. So you, you've met Ruth and Sue.
Yep.
And Mike. I, I, I let you, I did let you know that Heather Torrey has announced that she is, um, she is moving, uh, out of the area. Uh, she, she did receive another job, so she's gonna be working in food service industry in Vermont, which we're very happy for her. Yep, very happy for her. So we, we're posting and advertising for a new director. But in the last month or so, we've met a couple of times, um, Heather, Mike, myself, Suzanne, Ruth and Sue. And we got in for, they got a, they did a great job of getting their staff to participate in, um, just, you know, here are the three areas we're trying to address. What are your ideas? And then we took those lists and then together we figured out how to sort of put them in a, what we consider to be a plan. Um, and that we can literally use it as a blueprint, right? So we can go in and be checking off, you know, how are we doing on the things that we've all kind of agreed to do. So I, I put it in your packet, so hopefully you've had a little bit of chance to look it over. But maybe if you have any questions for any of these people who are already doing so much to get, you know, to make some changes. And the staff is very enthusiastic, which is also great to see.
Sure. One of the questions that I have, when I looked at this right on page one, under Penbrook, where it says rearrange staff hours to create efficiencies. So just what I have been hearing is that it's difficult with the amount of people that you do currently have. So how do you feel, um, with, so if we're removing several employees?
One, one, we're, we're reducing one, but we're looking at taking some of those hours and distributing them differently, which is the answer to your question. But we're looking at taking some of those hours and distributing them differently, which is the answer to your question.
Okay, so we're, we're removing a part-time employee, but taking the hours?
Some of those, some of that money, some of those hours and distributing it so you might have somebody come in an hour earlier from breakfast or busy.
Instead of fifteen minutes for prep time, we'll have forty-five minutes or, and then I have sixty kids in the morning for breakfast. So, doing the register and serving a healthy breakfast is, makes it, so an extra hour I'll be able to have hands on the cash register.
So it might be for an extra hour.
And helping me with prep. And then, uh, we'll have an extra hour for prep time in the morning. So instead of someone coming in at ten forty-five or eleven o'clock, they'll be able to come in at ten now, so.
Okay. It does sound like that could work.
Good.
So are we adding more hours other than, we're not.
We're working, we're gonna probably, it's gonna probably be a lot caught.
Sounds like the same number of hours.
It's gonna cost less, well, it might not be exactly the same number, but it won't be a full-time, it won't be a half-time person. It'll be some additional hours for people.
See, just take those hours and spread them out.
But next year, we're gonna add.
Because it's gonna be above and beyond. So that is, that is, um, this is okay with the individuals that are working, like, so they are able to change their schedule?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so that's already been discussed.
Yeah, and the goal is to try to do things more efficiently, because there are certain times where it's just like one person's running around scrambling. Or they don't have time to do certain things because they're busy doing something else.
And with us, um, adding the grab and go section, we're gonna transfer the lines around a little bit and we're gonna make a grab and go section. So the older kids that really do not like waiting in line, they'll have a speedy process. And then we'll be able to have more, someone handing that and, um, fixing that around so that they can go out and they don't have to wait in line. And that's gonna bring in more revenue, cause it's gonna bring in kids like, oh, I don't have to wait, look at that, that's what I want today, so. It's gonna be great.
It pulls them out of the long line.
Exactly.
So it makes that line shorter.
Yeah. Well, I think the, the benchmark of the students waiting in line, no more than five minutes will definitely be helpful.
Yep.
Individual students.
Um, so when you reconfigure that flow of traffic in there, who's gonna be helping like the younger kids do that?
The, the aides. The aides, well, they're really great. What they do is they do an orientation in the first week and they walk them through. And, um, we'll do it right before we serve lunch, so we'll walk them through the whole process so they know where they have to go. And then within a week, they all, they all do fantastic, they really do. Plus, we're always there. Come on in, let's get in. So it's good.
I like the idea of coordinating the menu with, um, school events and things like that.
Like how fun it would be to just say like Beauty and the Beast, how the art department was working on Beauty and the Beast. Let's, you know, invest a little bit, go to the Dolce store, put Cinderella on the table, have some music going on and, and just incorporate it. We'll have soup de jour, you know, it's just like have the same menu of what's going on. And if you have music going on when kids are eating, if you ever notice at home, it calms them down, makes them focus. Versus climbing on the table and grabbing trash from the buddy or something, you know, it's like, you know, it's gonna eat them.
Does that work for eighteen-year-olds?
Could, if you do have a metal.
Gotta pick the right music.
That's the problem.
Rap doesn't work. So that would be an example of here, you said increase specialty themes, games to, to increase interest and participation.
Coordinating the menu with school events.
Exactly.
Implementing monthly tray days, solicit and use student IDs.
Yeah, what, what is that, the monthly tray days?
It's, um, we used to do Lucky Tray Day, um, we'd put a sticker, um, somewhere in the tray and they want, they would win a prize. And we could do like, you could do a dessert, like, um, dessert of the day where, or you could do a sticker. It, it depends on what we decide to end up doing on Lucky Tray Day.
Every lunch, you'd have a tray.
Yeah.
And whoever gets that, like a tray, yes.
That's purely luck.
Pretty cool.
Yeah.
It's when I like that. And you know what, sticker goes a long way with elementary kids.
Yep. They love the stickers at our school.
So have you been soliciting the students already? You already began that process before the end of, so.
Mm-hmm. Yes. And they've been asking and asking and they love Lucky Tray Day and they miss it. They've been asking for that. And I've been talking a lot about bingo and just so they can learn it about different foods, do a food bingo. And they were really interested in that. And then, um, another thing that they were very interested in.
Whoa, 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 what's a food bingo? You're putting food on?
No. No, you, um, just names of different foods and, and then when you're asking if they, like, give an example broccoli. Oh, I got beef for broccoli. And then you could talk about it a little bit, you know, so. It just gives you different ways of teaching the food as a vegetable.
And I, I remember, you know, little gummies.
Yeah.
They love to play bingo games.
Insert all kinds of themes into those bingo games.
Yep.
Yeah, broccoli made me think of that garden. I was over there the other day. The gardens, they love the salad on Friday.
Oh my god, there's, there's so much in that garden. I think Monica was gonna harvest it, right?
Yes.
They're doing that at the high school too.
Yeah, yeah, they are, they are.
Just they brought lettuce in and stuff.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah, we had a gorgeous salad and they were so proud eating it because it's like, we grew this, you know, and it was great to see them.
Um, it sounds like, um, you're gonna make some big changes to the middle high school kitchen.
Oh yeah.
Which sounds really exciting. To have like five to six food stations, which is very impressive.
Yeah.
Do you wanna talk a little bit of how, what that's gonna look like or do you have plans or?
Do you know the, I mean, you know the high school looks like, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Where the dish window is now, we're gonna be removing that dishwasher, putting it in the back room of the school, of the kitchen. And that window will now become like a deli and super, as part of this money, we're trying to look at sandwich presses and, uh, and some other things for, uh, the grab and go section. So where the milk cooler is, that's gonna come out and be where the salad bar is, so it'll be a little bit longer line if they have milk cooler salad, cashier. But then in that section, we're gonna have this pot merchant display case where, kinda like when you go to McDonald's and they slide those burgers down the road, right? It'll be like that there, you know, kids can grab hamburgers, chicken patties, whatever else, you know, it's.
Every day the same thing, so they know, they think at any time they'll, they'll be, yeah.
Yeah. What's there, what's there.
And the art department has already done these very cool signs that will hang down and will do like the little meal, you know, the little meal, what do you call that thing?
Display plates.
Yeah, display.
Show plates.
There's a name for it that I keep forgetting the name.
Show plates. Show plates.
And then next to the, um, sandwich merchandise, there's gonna be a pizza display or survives as a pizza. And then, uh, you know, one of the biggest things will be the coffee shop.
Yeah.
So we've changed the location.
So we've changed the location.
Oh, really?
Well, listen to, listen to Mike, he's got a.
You know where the water machine is in the caf now?
The what?
The water machine.
Vending machine. On the end.
So right to the left.
Right in the back.
All the way in the back, yes.
Yeah, the water vending machine. So, if you're looking at the auditorium, the vending machine would be on that back wall, like if you're in the caf looking out.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, uh, so in that wall, we're gonna cut.
It's in the kitchen?
Nope.
No, I'd say.
You're in the cafeteria looking out.
At the auditorium. So, okay.
Oh yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
So right, right inside the door, right inside the door.
Yeah.
So, uh, we're gonna cut a giant hole in that wall, put a, put a big serving window. And then on the other side of that would be, was a supply closet, a good-sized supply closet. The, the guys have already emptied that all out today and we're gonna, uh, make that like a satellite coffee, coffee house where they serve out the window. Be countertop, uh, you know, coffee makers, toaster, microwave.
And then there'll be a, 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 what do you call it, a counter on the outside.
Yeah, the counter. Yeah, outside.
And then we're gonna, we're gonna build a half, half.
With urns of coffee.
So we're gonna build a half-wall, so there'll be a, so there'll quarter off the space.
Kinda quartered in, yeah, right.
There'll be some high-top tables in it. And we're gonna build a facade on the front and it'll.
The high-top tables will be.
In the middle.
And just like, we'll put like a knee wall, kinda like around it, the window to kinda make it look.
So what made us change from the school store?
Peter.
He had a part in it.
We did meet with all the, like, public officials.
Farmer, building inspector, border health.
The border health kinda liked the idea of the shirts not being in the same area as the coffee store.
Really? We're talking about kinda merging it.
Merging it, so that the school store still exists.
But this will be actually better, cause it'll be easier for supervision for, cause you, now you'll, if they were in the school store, you, you know, you wouldn't necessarily see them, right? Where here, you, it's literally a section of the.
But it would bring them in to the school store to buy and they would be, you know what I mean?
Yes.
The merchant, yeah.
So it's kinda like, unless they're gonna wear some of the school store stuff as they're serving coffee to promote. I know Peter's like.
Maybe.
It's just a marketing thing, that's all.
So who's gonna be, who's working in it?
Right now, that's the discussion. Right now, we're gonna figure out a way, again, we might have to adjust some hours. But we would need, it's gonna be, the food service is gonna make, it's gonna be their project.
Right, right, so how many people would you?
Well, right now, I think we're only thinking one.
You think one, one will be sufficient to handle that?
Well, again, we're gonna have to see.
Right.
That's, it's like, cause if we, cause if we need, if we need more people and we're making money, then nothing, it's not, it's not hard to add a couple of hours to somebody, right? It's just that right now, we're, we're concentrating on getting the thing up and running. Mike's gotten some, don't, getting some coffee, what do you call those little things, coffee, um, urns.
Like pop, like pops.
Right, maybe a blender and make the.
That if we buy their coffee.
Yeah, yeah, we're right into those, that type of coffee that is.
And we're doing a little coffee, coffee shop kind of concept without it being a physicals coffee cart.
Coffee cart.
Coffee, uh, kind of.
At, at, uh, Penbrook, which Margaret's very happy about, especially if we serve cones.
What is it gonna be?
What is it?
It's like a coffee cart, so we don't have a place where we're gonna build, you know, a shop, but we can have like a cart where the teachers can come in in the morning and.
We're calling it coffee.
Different kinds of coffee, if you little pastry.
Oh, that's great.
So are you gonna remove that coffee machine that's in your, in the front hallway?
You getting rid of Zippy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If we can, again, we, I've had a request from Mrs. Collins, we have to have flavored coffee.
Yes.
Of course, vanilla.
But it's great too, because you're bringing the teachers down the kitchen, they're hoping the teachers.
Was that Diane's?
Will participate. Okay, so we're pretty excited about what that, what that can be and.
That will be very interesting.
That makes it friendly to the teachers. Now they did work before, it was really great.
So on another note, we had talked about this once before, will you be able to get a, a couple of microwaves in there for students who are bringing lunches that they just wanna heat up? So that will be coming, cause I didn't see it.
Yeah, that's.
But I know that this is separate.
It's not revenue generating.
Well, that would be, that's not right. There's no, yeah.
Yes, no, I know. Maybe a cold, whatever.
But the, the different stations we should, we should help and then the à la carte. Our goal would be to add more à la carte options, some of which we can sell in the coffee shop.
Yeah. Did we figure out the hours for the coffee shop? Is it, are we doing before and after school or did we?
Could students work that as sort of like a learn your math?
Well, that's the other thing we're talking about, but they'd have, they'd have to be under the auspices of the food service department.
We do have that now in our kitchen and, uh, it is a great working system.
What do you have now?
With that the students come down and work their math.
Really?
And yep, we have a cash drawer and we, um, and we help them figure out what they have in the drawer, figure out what they're gonna sell. And then they come back, they sell it and then they come back and they figure out what they sell and they figure out the cash drawer.
You could also teach them, you know, what goes out, you know, how much was sold, how much do you need to order, you know, sort of.
I just. Exactly. Exactly.
Inventory.
Yeah, the little snack shop in the library, Penbrook Library years ago.
Yeah, years ago.
And teach students and teach them about the money and the inventory and.
Coming in and going out.
Yeah.
Now, would the water machine be, the location moved?
Yes.
We've talked about relocating the vending machines over, closer to the gym so that they'd get a lot of after-school use.
And for visiting teams.
Yeah, visiting teams, yeah.
I, I mean, we will, we hope to sell quite a bit of water, right? Cause that's a high profit, right? So even if it's not in the vending machine, you know, like in your merchandise or a machine and, you know. I mean, every place we visited, they had different kinds of selt, you know, like seltzer water, flavored water, all that stuff, which they have. So, our goal would be, and the kids can get, if they don't want milk, they can get a water now, yeah. So, you know, that'll, that'll be, um.
And I have all the, the bids for next year, so I can really look into the bids too, Sue and I both, and see what other kinda products are available. We'll be able to get our hands on.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna take it home with me and be my pool reading, looking at a lot of that stuff.
I also like how you have a focus group, that you're going to be working with students for a focus group.
Nice.
So that.
That was something that we were asking Heather for some time to do, since they are the ones that are the consumers. Exactly. They're with the customers and they wanna have input. And I suggested also that if they have a concern and they, or if, even if we had like a suggestion box or something like that, that we would have some kind of a bulletin board somewhere where we could actually respond to their concern and they can see it in writing, that somebody acknowledged what their issue was and this is what we're doing about it.
Acknowledged.
That was another.
Great idea.
Thing.
Yeah, the whole assessing the customer satisfaction, right?
Exactly, exactly.
That regular communication with them.
So the pizza oven that we have isn't gonna be sufficient enough to, um, to maintain like lunch for everybody? We still have to go outside with Domino's?
Well, that's it.
Yeah.
That's at Penbrook.
Oh, the Domino's?
No, it's not.
No, no. Oh, but isn't it being moved to the middle high school?
No, there's not, no. A warmer, like a, what do you call it, a, the warmer was.
The warmer was.
Well, we are.
The warmer was.
Oh, so.
Food warmer. Cause you were down one. The Penbrook pizza oven's a pretty big piece and we're not thinking that the town would think too highly of the fact that, that we're, you know, taking something.
Right, so do we use that, we use that?
Yeah, but it doesn't, it doesn't, um, you can put, you can put six at a time in, but it's so difficult to get six that it only fits about four practical.
Well, if we did catering, we could use that, we could definitely use that, that oven.
So when the building project occurred and the kitchen, kitchen was being installed, they just thought that a pizza oven would be?
Well, that was, I think, what was that, you know, people were asked for input. These guys weren't part of that discussion. Um, and I think it was even, and I think it was even.
So you wouldn't have, I wouldn't have done that. What I would've done is buried. I would've done another oven and another steamer.
I would've buried the other side, so the assistant cook and, and the cook manager can cook at the same time and process more food out.
That's so odd, why wasn't the?
I, I think that was when Diane Halipowski was here, actually, when we started talking about that, because, um, you know, I, I think Heather has always said that she wouldn't have done that either, but. The host set up the kitchen, I don't know.
So tell me about the catering. Tell me what, what you can do in terms of like the, the school, um, the sports, sports banquet, things like that. Um, basically, Sue and I need to put our, cause we don't have a director right now, but we need to put our heads together and we need to get together with like Suzanne and Carol and, um, basically brainstorm. I've done lots of catering where I've worked at previous, I've worked in, um, for food service companies, I've worked in other schools. So I'm pretty, I can pretty much rattle a menu out of my head, but, um, it's, you know, costing it out and coming up with fair prices. Because you want, it's, it's more, we want it for money, but it's, sometimes we'll be dealing with the schools, it's more of a goodwill relationship. Service that we provide, um, it's not anything that you really plan on getting rich off of, maybe eventually down the line. But it's more of a, especially the way that we're, we're set up, cause we're not a big corporation.
No, we're not a profit center.
Yeah, and I'm not saying for big profit, but when we have these sports banquets, it's not really that they have these, um, you know, the food is great, but it's not like this elegant thing. I certainly think that we could capitalize on. Oh, we could do so much better, I'm sure. You know, I've done a lot of them and, um, I mean, they love their Italian food, um, they love their Mexican food. Believe it or not, the kids, one of their favorite things, they love pulled pork, that's something that we used to do a lot at them, especially. Um, believe it or not, the kids, one of their favorite things, they love pulled pork, that's something that we used to do a lot at them, especially.
The barbecue, yeah.
The barbecue, the kids really love that, um.
Yeah. And then even the meetings, like with the, when they have the PD days and and things like that, that you could capitalize on that, and how do we get the teachers to um to have, you know, eh to eat more there as well?
Mm-hmm. Right. Yeah.
Like what what can we do?
Well, I I would really like to work on the teacher's menu.
That's something that you and I need to.
So it's a little bit more sensible, we really need to promote the teacher's menu, um.
Maybe some pre-ordering, so that.
Yeah, I think sometimes the teachers don't like to cut.
Yeah, some pre-ordering.
You do that now though, right?
Yes.
Pre-ordering it?
We do, we do, um.
Yeah.
Does anyone do it? I know it's available, is it?
Yes. It's available, and we do do it.
Oh, yeah, no, I I know it's available, just wanted to.
Yeah. We'd like to do more of it.
Yeah.
Um, and a lot of teachers do come down.
We could deliver it.
Oh, and when I was in Effy Nysipin and I was over there, there were teachers that came to get uh the the sandwich, the the deli bar.
And then I um. Uh-huh. Yep.
So they could come and order whatever it is they wanted, so I did, I did see that, that it's.
Yeah. Right. Right.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I just get more and new choices, you'll see that, you'll have more of them.
Yeah. And I think when the flow is better, because there's gonna be all these different stations where people can go, and we're gonna have the grabbing going, that's gonna make an unbelievably huge difference. That I can't even, it's it's gonna be unbelievable, that part of it, um, and that'll just free up so many other things, I have a feeling that the deli will be extremely busy, especially with, you know, I wanna compete with Panera, that's always been my, when I was in New Hampshire, it was Panera. Forget about it, like.
And if we have paninis, where we actually have presses, you know, and homemade and homemade soup, you know, so.
Yeah. And soup.
Homemade.
Soup and wraps, and I wanna get in, I wanna get in my hands on some nice gluten-free options, so that we have nice gluten-free um wraps at least, maybe some breads, we, I have to really look into our bids and the things that I can get my, that we can both of us get our hands on. To be able to offer those kinds of things, you know, daily specials, soup and sandwich, soup and salad, soup and half sa- you know, like just really promoting a lot of interesting things, and I wanna be able to do a vegetarian special, I wanna really market on. You know, the different needs, people are, the kids are very sophisticated these days, and they're, you know, they're willing to try new and exciting things. Um, they're addicted to anything with sriracha in it at high school right now, that's like, that's just taken off, I do like us with the light mayo with sriracha seasoning and the kids, they just line up in troves for it.
They like the chicken, the wrap you do with the the chicken fingers, but they like the spicy chicken fingers.
They love. Yeah. Yeah, they like the spicy, but they love wraps, any chicken that you can put in a wrap and squirt of really awesome sauce on and having all the veggies and everything in front of them.
Yeah.
Because Mike got a new text from me yesterday after we did some touring and talking in the kitchen of when the deli is set up in that window, that I suggested, you know. Um, to definitely have room so that we can have two cutting boards, because I would assume that there'll be another person that's gonna have to jump in and help clear the lines out, because I think it's gonna be that.
Busy.
Crazy, and that we have to plan to have enough room so the two bodies aren't banging into each other, that we can walk side by side to be able to get our hands on everything, so we can get the kids in and get the kids out.
So the walking survey of students are eating, so you're gonna have, so you're gonna survey, like even if you see kids that are bringing lunch, you'll go over there?
Oh, yeah, I go over there and talk to them and, yeah.
Away, and say, what do you like, what do you want?
Right, that's a lot of the things that end up on the menu that are their favorite items that I just will go on and, but I mean, we could maybe do um table tents, I mean, it, uh, we'll have to kinda talk about how we could actually get the. I have those, yeah, to get the the actual feedback from them.
Yeah, yeah.
And contest to name the cafeteria?
That was.
Yeah. You're gonna name the name the cafeteria?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That was just a, yeah, 'cause I really wanted to get it, I Suzanne saw those magazines, I was a little excited about.
Yeah, they were really nice.
Wasn't that really nice, just it, you, my, I I would love to be able to um, up when you walk into the kitchen, have it painted like the royal blue and and have the kids pick a name for the calf.
Yeah. Oh, blinkers. Brown grub.
Whatever, you know, the knights, the royals, the royals dining hall, the the whatever, you know, all kinds of royals.
Royals. What are we?
You know, there are some really talented artists, I mean, look at our hallways that they've done.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure you could even have a student do it, which is even, uh, which is really cool.
I just think it would, because I've been in touch with the art department, and it would be nice to be able to have the name put up above for when they walk in the doors, to have the name, maybe have a ribbon cutting ceremony when everything's changed and. You know, get them excited and make it fun, like I, every every time they come through, all of us keep saying, guys, wait till next year, you're not gonna believe it. And they're like, really, really, 'cause they're like, you guys really stepped it up this year, I'm like, oh, you don't even know what's coming.
Yeah, and we, and we're talking about changing the look and feel, so like, you know how there's the pillars, like having Mike's guys build little shelves around like three of those.
High tops.
You know, like, and you put high top stools.
Oh, right.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So people can, so we have a little counter top, yeah. So we have a little.
That's a great one, too.
Yeah.
So tell me about the snack shack at some of the games, I think that's a great idea.
That was just an idea.
That's a good idea, though.
That was a good summary, 'cause when we took all the ideas from the.
They're on papers.
Well, no, no, but we were talking about, like, we know that the boosters, you know, use the, use the the sh- the shack, and we don't wanna take the booster money away.
No, it's the boosters.
Um, but if there were some, if there were like even a couple of games where the kids wanted to, you know, work in the shack, you know, during a football game.
But the, but at the baseball games now, there's nothing.
Right, so occasionally we, you could certainly do, um.
'Cause I think the football games, the.
It's the football.
The park is a football, but at for the baseball games and some things.
They do it.
Some basketball, they did it at basketball periodically, it wasn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was hit or miss, it's that's hard to get the parent volunteers.
But that would be tough too, for you to get people.
Well, that's the problem.
Yeah, I have no experience with that at all, I'm sorry, selling snacks, I've been a booster, but I've never done it from the food service end.
The games. No, because the games are later.
So, yeah, so we, you know, so we were putting that down as something, you know, we think we would like to try, we'll see if we can pull it off, that might not be something we can pull off this year, we'll have to see with how much staff.
Well, especially if we're trying to reinvigorate the boosters.
Invigorate the boosters, and you know, if we're doing catering, you know, the same people that would do it.
We're doing, students. Have students involved.
Yeah, we could look at the the students for sure.
What was that, the issue though, with the students touching the money?
They couldn't.
Well, they they would have to be an adult.
Well.
Right, there would have to be at least one adult, but.
Right, there would have to be someone like a volunteer, like a volunteer overseeing. I think, honestly, I mean, this year, this year.
It depends on who's running it, you know.
I mean, this year, we're gonna be, we're probably in the end, gonna be ten thousand dollars, you know, in the hole for food service, however, you know, I mean, the end is the year at with ten thousand dollars positively, right? It's just that now we have summer pays and we have a few other things that sort of carry us into the negative, so I feel like if we do. Even half of what we're 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 hoping to, and we generate additional revenue, we should be fine for next year, and the goal is to create the opportunity, not only to provide a a good product for the for the kids, which is what our real goal is. If we can generate some additional revenue, then we can do things like purchase new cafeteria tables, or you know, other kinds of things for the cafeteria that we feel make it look more, you know, like a.
What's wrong with the cafeteria tables, no, people like the round instead?
Well, they, they, they sit, they sit a lot of people, as Peter pointed out, you know, you can fit a lot more people at those rectangular ones.
Right.
But if you go into cafeterias where there there is a, there where they have rounds or a variety of tables, sometimes you'll see some high tops, like like I wouldn't have a problem at lunchtime if if kids went to the high top tables and s- and and sat there, right, in the coffee shop, right, in that area. You know, but some longer tables and maybe some shorter ta- some round tables, just so, you know, kids that wanna sit in different shapes.
They, just getting it not to look like a school cafeteria.
Mm-hmm.
It's, and it sounds like it's gonna look more like a restaurant, you know.
Right.
Right. Oh, it sounds, yeah.
White tablecloths.
Well, no, we're not tablecloths.
College, like a college.
Yeah, like a campus.
More of a college, it's gonna be more like a college vibe, it's gonna be more.
Like a campus. Yeah. Yeah. And if the kid could be up counters around the edges with stools, you know, so people don't wanna sit sort of with one or two people, so that's our goal, is to try to change the.
Sounds like you've got great vision. Very sound.
Looking for your iPad.
And and they like.
I know, we're gonna have iPad stations.
Yeah, we're putting those in the cap.
Oh, you want?
Peter has a plan.
That's great.
Oh, yeah, we got that.
Oh, that's great.
So, I mean, I I have to say, I I can't thank these ladies enough for the stepping up and really putting a lot of time and effort into trying to come up with this, you know, you notice it says cook manager on a lot of these things, so, you know, we, you know, we uh wanna make sure we don't overtaxed tax them either.
Yeah.
But they will have Mike's and and my and Suzanne's full support in in whatever it is they they need to do, and we'll we'll hire a new director that, you know, will be on board with the kinds of things that we wanna be doing.
New director.
So I I'm really optimistic about what next year can can be.
I am too, but I also wanna just say that I think um the school committee has a lot of, you know, you have our support as well.
So. I am too.
Oh, definitely, yeah, we definitely do.
Sure. Um, we are very optimistic that you could.
We feel it. Yeah, everything I wanna be.
Yep. Handle this, and just having this and all the, you know, ideas and things, I think you did a great job, all, you know, you two and your staff, but um, you know, we.
Yeah. Thank you.
All feel that this is something that can remain uh in-house, but we will be watching it carefully because obviously of the money.
Yeah. Right.
Um, but you do have our support as well.
So you'll get invited to come and.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Can't we?
Have lunch?
Yeah.
Yes, we'd love that.
That would be good.
Love that.
Cheryl and I.
It'd be exciting.
If old school.
Certainly exciting.
Kinda cut the coffee.
Yeah.
I'm so happy coffee.
I really hope that that works out.
I think that the.
I I hope it does.
Just be sold to the students before or after school, right?
I don't know if I need.
Really, even for teachers.
Yes.
Cause we're not gonna battle caffeine during school hours.
We're at the bellwether. Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Just following the rules, right.
Yeah, there are rules.
Yeah, I'm with you, yes.
I don't know about decaffeine, all that kinda stuff.
Decaf.
We got.
That's what, that's what Suzanne.
Decafs.
In one of her visits to a school, it's like, oh, yeah, we just tell them to decaf.
Oh, yeah.
Now, Michael, I didn't say.
It was something, I was very vague.
Um, well, this isn't totally directed to the plan, but I know Suzanne brought this up um a few meetings ago about the My School Box, and if you are a family.
Yes.
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 Did we find out if you could link?
Yeah, we looked, we looked at that and.
Yeah.
Nutri Kids says.
Oh, that's just such a.
We cannot link.
So you can't link the family.
Oh, what?
But what did we say, though, we said, 'cause we we had this conversation.
So you can transfer, you can call Tracy, um, and she can transfer.
You can tr-
Yeah, you can go back.
Or you could do it online.
And she can do it, you can transfer like you can with your bank accounts, so you can, you can transfer, you just can't have one family account.
Yeah, yeah. Exactly.
The cashier can't, like, pull from another account.
What would be great if you had little plastic cards like credit cards, and it's all preloaded, and they just hand it and you swipe it, you know?
Yeah.
That to me would make sense, 'cause then you could just have one account, and you just keep loading.
Then what if they forget the card, or they don't have it?
All our kids go out to recess and then come to lunch, so they would end up, you know.
But the cards could be there, you could just, I mean, you know.
I think, but you can, the point is.
There's gotta be a way that.
You would just say, transfer money. So if parents can.
Now you're making me work. Just saying.
It's better than what we thought the last time you asked the question, right?
So.
Do it that way. Better than no?
No, I like, I like My School Box.
We called, we called Nutri Kids.
I think it works so good.
Yeah. Okay, anything else?
No, I can't.
Thank you, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. You can go now, so Ryan's gonna be mad at me. Wait, Mike.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Ryan's gonna be mad at me. Thanks, guys.
Are you going, are are one of you going to be on the committee to search for the new food service?
Yes, we're. Okay. Already talked about that, yeah.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good night.
Night.
And I just wanted to, Guy's not here, 'cause he wasn't able to come tonight, but.
I love that.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to share with you.
I really do. Barbie, think of the money that it's gonna bring.
Well, it'll it'll bring in money, look at the fun.
Okay.
Creative.
Fifty dollars.
I mean, no, it's for the athletic department, right?
It is, it's just for the athletic department.
And and we could.
Yeah, I have some questions.
So students, uh, staff, I'm sorry, what am I saying, students and staff can.
Personalize their spot.
Get a space, get a space, so there's, Peter, how many spaces are there altogether? Are there a hundred and forty?
No.
No, more than that.
No, no, for the staff too, total.
No, like total. It's gonna be more than that.
I I don't really know, I wish, should've grabbed Mike.
Well, Mike would know.
He'd have him back.
Quick!
Does every staff member have a parking space?
Yeah.
Right, and so this, yeah, there's gonna be more than one forty, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but this doesn't.
I don't see a lot of staff members aging in that.
No, I was gonna say, this mostly like students, right, I see students.
Oh, you know, I don't either.
You're gonna do it, right, Peter?
Doing. Yeah, he's gonna have a big PL.
Mine's already done.
This is already done.
I think underclassmen should be able to pay the fifty dollars to do yours.
Or.
Oh.
Oh, crazy.
Is there an auction?
Am I gonna give them the money?
I would do more than, so it has to be approved.
Fifteen.
No, no, I'm gonna approve the design, you don't have to, yeah.
Of course, but, okay, so a few other questions that I have on here is, the first one.
We might have to make a list of this for Guy.
And I did take a look at this before I got here, like um Pinterest had a whole bunch of stuff about it, but I couldn't find any school in Massachusetts that did it.
Oh.
It was all like California, Florida, there were a bunch of the schools out there that did it, so I don't even know where Guy got the idea, but it's creative, but.
I don't know where. It's creative.
So every year, so Suzanne's kids can do this next year.
So we're cutting in. Yes.
So what happens the following year?
Guy has black paint and they paint the.
Well, the only seniors get spots.
Right.
Yeah.
So they're gone.
Right, so then we paint over it?
Yes.
And then start again?[1307.64]
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's washable paint.
We're just, what do you mean?
Kidding, oh, no. Um.
For a screen storm, let's go.
Kidding.
Then they gotta pay fifty bucks again.
Fifty dollars again, it's open to you. So who, who will do that? Like Mike and his guys will do that and what's the cost of that?
No, the guy's already bought the black paint, apparently, he's got it already, he figured out how to do that.
Fifty dollars is.
He said to me, he's gonna buy the black paint.
We're taking the money for the paint out of that fifty dollars.
For the black paint?
For all, all the paint.
Oh, okay.
Fifty dollars includes.
Yeah, I thought they were bringing their own.
The kids are bringing their own. I asked Guy that, I think he said that the kids bring their own paint.
Yeah, the kids bring their own.
I think he said it has something.
It's gotta be approved paint, right, I mean.
Well, well, it has, it has to be a special kind and it says what kind it has, the instructions here. And like I said, he said, you know, we're gonna give it a try, you know, sometimes in the first year you might not get, you know, as much interest. But if people see that it works well, then it, those kinda things take off.
So then the black paint.
Said the kids have had some interest in it.
Will be, well, it's, it's due by June twenty ninth.
Yeah, so, though, I, I, last conversation I had with him, he said that he was getting a lot of interest from kids. I don't know what that means.
So the, the seniors already have their spaces? No, they have a space?
Yeah, they just got.
Yeah, they have their space.
So how, what, what happens, um. Like if it's a fundraiser, really, if, if a child has a space and doesn't wanna pay the fifty, you can't open it up to like. Underclassmen to do it. I just think it's gonna look silly if there's like ten spaces done. And you would think you'd want.
The whole parking lot's gonna look that, it's gonna be checkaboard because most of the step, oh, most of the staff aren't gonna do that.
No, I can't imagine, I, I wasn't even thinking the staff were involved.
That's, the spots are mixed.
And there'll be probably someone.
What, oh, out back, there's staff out back?
Yeah.
Are there staff at the lower lot too? Like by the turf?
Yeah, the cafeteria staff is there.
And they have spaces, they, they have their own spaces to do that.
So the kids do park with the teachers, I didn't realize that. I thought that whole lot by the field.
Well, out back though, the lower lot, the kids don't park in there.
Some, some do, I think, against, I think, against the, uh.
Fence.
The field?
Yeah.
Against the, oh, against, no, I'm talking.
That used to be visitors, but now it's not visitors anymore. It's, now the visitors are over in front of the.
Right, so you're saying near the, near the varsity baseball field?
Yeah.
There are, there are kids that park.
Along that line.
Yeah.
I think, yeah.
So how many spots are there for seniors?
He doesn't know.
I don't know, um.
Did every senior get a spot this year?
No.
So they were.
Prob- probably about eighty, I would say, off the top of my head, all time.
Strikes me rings a bell. Of seniors?
Yeah.
Who get spots? Oh. So, I mean, we can certainly have Guy, you know, come and explain a little bit more about it, but I did, I just wanted. Before we started painting the parking lot, I wanted you to.
I have a great idea.
So does this not need school committee approval?
No, I don't think so because it's not permanently changing the physical plant, that if, if it was physically. Like we were building a structure or something like that, I think from the, how I read the policy. But I wanted you to, to A, know about it because it's, you know, it's happening in our school facility, it's gonna be visible.
Why is it an athletics thing? And I get that it's Guy, he's athletics.
Guy, Guy needs money. And we've been bugging him, he needs to do something with revenue. He saw this idea, he liked it. He said, I'm gonna see whether this is something that the kids would get excited about, I think he ran it by some of the kids. You know, heard that some interest and said, you know what, he proposed it and Peter and I looked at it and I said.
Did your kids know about it?
They didn't check.
I haven't seen them.
No, it's you and I. No, I haven't seen my kids. Was it on morning announcements or?
No, I, Peter, do you know how this was announced?
Yeah.
It was on morning announcements?
And they all got this thing? Did they all get this?
Um, I don't know if they all got, if they're interested, they did.
I mean, it's got a little PowerPoint.
We didn't give that out to everybody.
Okay, cause he, it was something, it was on the, it was that way out on the table because I saw, he, Guy went and got a, got a copy for me.
But it says it's due on the twenty ninth, so they must know about it.
Well, I was gonna say if your design was due yesterday.
Right, the design was due yesterday.
What he did was he, he, he gave them during the lot, when, when we announced like the, um. People who got it.
Yeah.
They, they got that.
Oh, right, so they, they get the same time, yeah.
Got their parking space.
That's right.
They also got this with it.
Yeah.
I'd be interested to know how many people, um.
Yeah.
Signed up. For it.
And we won't know until the twenty ninth.
We'll let you know in July, July meeting.
Where you can just see it, August twenty first or whatever the date was.
Yeah, there's like painting day or something, right? And, and who's approving the sketch? You and Guy?
Yeah. I think there'll be some editing. They get a lot of black paint.
Yeah, I just hope it doesn't open up, like. People to think that graffiti is, I mean, not that it's graffiti, but. I don't know, just, yeah, legalize graffiti, just.
Well, I, I don't think, I don't think it's gonna be that much of a problem because it's, it's quite, that's like painting something on your locker. Like we know who did, who it belongs to.
There's no spray painting, that, that's.
Yeah, and I'm worried about somebody doing something to someone else's.
Yeah.
Wow.
So we'll try it.
I wasn't necessarily saying graffiti.
A lot of that, we'll discontinue it, so we'll, we'll, I think it's a great idea, it's very creative. We're always looking ways, for ways to make money and, uh. I think we're gonna give it a try, so, definitely.
Okay, great. A for effort and creativity. We're into the creativity thing lately.
Maybe they could design the thing in the maker's space, huh?
Yep, yeah, that's right.
So when, when are we gonna discuss? When are you gonna discuss? Did you wanna discuss the, anything about the district satisfaction survey or? Just, was it, would you just wanna do it for information? With public relations met tonight and kinda began to look at it, you know?
I don't, I don't know.
I don't know if you wanna discuss it or you wanna, or you wanna email us some thoughts and then we'll, we'll work on it, it's up to, it's up to you how you wanna do it. I didn't know.
Did you have an opportunity, people that aren't on PR to look at it? Cause I, I highlighted a few things, but if. You highlighted some things, do you wanna talk about it? Sure, let's talk about it.
I highlighted, you know, some outliers and, uh, some of them are positive, some of them are negative and.
One of the things we talked about at PR was. You have to define sometimes what communic- good communication is to one person, might be something different to another person. So, or, you know, even homework, you know, what one person uses too much homework, somebody else might, you know, or whatever, so. We felt like for the future, we might have to be more specific.
The wording has to be more specific.
On, on this?
On certain questions.
So when you say my child's homework is appropriate for his or her grade, how much is?
But, but, the term appropriate.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's what we're saying is some of the wording or, you know, the word enhance. Everybody's gonna look at that differently, so we have to sort of figure out how we can, um. Make that question a little bit more specific, more laser, um.
Well, the other problem that, um, Carol mentioned was people didn't do the survey because. They couldn't differentiate answering the survey for either school.
So like on the start school later, people were able to say, you know, it's Pembroke or it's middle high school or I'm a parent, you know, my kids are in these grades. We, that wasn't, we, people said, people, what people told me when I said, did you do the survey? They said, no, because I would've answered it differently for the middle high, if I have a middle high school student. And if I have an elementary student, and I couldn't do that. I couldn't figure out how to work, I couldn't figure out how to make that work.
Short of them taking a survey two or three times for each kid, you can't, you can't capture that.
Right.
Right.
And if we're, if, if we're concerned about the length of the survey in the first place, asking them to take it two or three times is even less realistic.
So we did talk about that too, you know, sort of, so if you remember, the first time we did the survey, we did it based on. We took the element, the focus areas of the strategic plan and formulated questions around that. And we tried to get all of, and the second time we did the survey, we tried to say, well, if we wanna look at being able to track. Then we wanna ask some of the same questions, so we can see if there's any trend data, you know, information. I mean, usually you need three times to do it to get a trend, but, you know, were there, what, were there any differences, right? Um, but, you know, maybe we, maybe we just need to continue to work on perfecting the, the survey. Being a little less worried about some of the things we're, we were worried about initially.
How many took the survey?
One hundred and sixteen?
Uh, yeah, something just over a hundred.
And so do you remember last year, like around, is this a increase?
Well, no, this is, no, this is a, it's a decrease.
Four hundred last year or?
Yeah, two years ago.
Oh, and then only one sixteen, one sixteen is very small.
And we, and we put it up like over and over and over and over.
Well, I think we, we did learn, or at least I, I think we learned, I don't wanna include other people in that. Having it go out like this, the start school later survey did into people's email boxes, you could send reminders, you could send thank yous. Is a lot more effective than, hey, if you happen to be on Facebook at the right time and this pops up, take a survey. So I think that's an opportunity to.
To, yeah, something for the future.
A lot of sense, yeah.
Send it directly to them.
Exactly.
Yeah, we wanna hear from you.
And maybe you do, maybe you do it iteratively, you know, everyone who was a pen, a student in Pembroke gets it week one. Everyone who was a kid in the middle school week two, you know, whatever that is, you can't, you can't. Get it perfect, but you can. Do better, I guess, in capturing.
Because some of the questions were not, you know, we weren't really sure what they were targeting, was this a Pen Book question? You know, parent asking, answering that, answering it from a, you know, middle high school?
It was three twenty five last time.
It was.
Three twenty five?
Three twenty five.
In twenty fifteen?
In fifteen.
Wow.
And I guess the, the, the thought process at least two years ago, cause I was on PR then, was, yes, the term homework is appropriate for my student. It is not specifically defined, but everyone has a, an opinion about whether the homework is. So it's, it, everyone's, everyone's opinion is at a different level, but it's, it's what's important to me. My, my child's homework is appropriate, could be a totally different range than yours, but. I'm a parent for my child and that's, that's the level that matters.
So I think the challenge, what we were talking about is, okay, so now what do we do with the information? So it's fine to get it, you know? But then what do we do with it, right? So how do we know, like, who thinks it's appropriate or not appropriate? Like what, what do we, how do we, what do we do with it?
Well, and we do have homework guidelines.
We do, yeah.
Right.
Ten minutes per grade, are some grades ignoring that, or we don't, we don't know.
And it could also be the, the, what is being given also as homework.
Which we did talk about differentiating because different kids need different things at different times.
So you have some parents who get furious with you because you assigned something that's a project and they feel like, you know. The kids should be doing this in school, and then you have other people who don't like it if you give, you know, math problems. Because they don't feel that that's meaningful. So I, I think it's just a homework.
More projects.
Or they, or they want more or less project, you know, I mean, it's, so it is a, it is a, homework is, if we wanna take homework on again. Again, as a, as an issue, then, you know, certainly we, we can do that.
So is this to sort of, okay, so we have the results and we did it two years ago and we, we see. You know, the percentages, what goes up or down.
Mm-hmm.
So is it then to make a sort of an action plan? Okay, so we see this, it's gone down X amount of points, so this is something we need to address. How are we going to address it? Is that the purpose of this?
Well, I think the purpose of it was to give us a dipstick on, you know, what people's perceptions were of, of those areas in the strategic plan.
But then are we gonna change?
Well, it depends, right? So that, we, we have certain things that we're working on in the strategic plan. Some of these things might be like, okay, we haven't got that right yet, so we just need to continue taking the course of action that we're taking. Some of it may be that we need to be more explicit to the public on what it is we're doing because maybe they don't know all the things that are going on. Right? So it, it, I think that's what it is, it's just to kinda, were there, are there areas that, that we wanna be sure? That we target and then, yes, I think, I don't think we wanna chase every rabbit hole, you know, that we might see. But just like the schools have a survey they do in their school improvement plan and then they use that information as much as they can. To, to drive some of their school improvement efforts. So that's the purpose of the district, you know, are there, are there things that we're really missing on? Or things that the public thinks we're doing really well that we really wanna continue to keep focusing on. That's kinda how, how I see it. Like that's, that's the purpose. And I thought was interesting, the section we just, the little bit of information we got on the, on the indicators of excellence. Because it sounded like people were basically saying that they thought those were all important things to report on. And they thought the benchmarks were pretty good, except for a couple, there are the graduation rate they thought was too low. And they thought the participation rates at thirty percent or forty percent were too low.
Right.
Um, but otherwise, you know, so that's something that can give us some direction if we wanna do like a district data report card. You know, we can get, that stuff is all easily gathered, you know, we can, you know, that, that I think was useful in terms of getting.
Yeah, I will say, and, and he did finally leave, but I think one of the big things that I saw was school facilities aren't being maintained.
Yeah, that's a huge.
Jumped.
Yeah, because that jumped.
Forty six percent.
Yep, so people, some of that is really something you can see. It's a little harder sometimes to quantify things you can't see, but that, yes, I mean, kudos to Mike and his staff, I think they have done a terrific job.
Well, and the technology.
And technology, that, that's, that's right, that's improvement. You know, there's still obviously food services, still, you know, something that people think can be improved, but we have a plan now for that. Communication will always be a challenge, trying, trying to figure out exactly what it is that, you know, we wanna continue to do or what we. You know, what we need to do more of.
In a moving target as people's habits change.
I know, and I ju, I think our communication has gone tenfold in the last.
With he, I just.
With, with Twitter, with Facebook, with the blogs, the principals, the morning announcement, I don't know, I just, I can't imagine like what more, yeah. Budget forum, but this one, this one I was surprised where it says the school district uses financial resources effectively.
I know. Um. Is, uh, where is it?
What number was that, Barbie?
Thirty one.
Thirty one.
Well, and again, it's hard to tell where it's coming from.
Right.
You know, maybe it's a student.
But the budget forums are.
Right, yeah, I mean.
You know, provided and.
It is complicated though, cause today I had a meeting with Tilly Evangelista and, uh, George Comiskey. And we were talking, um, they're talking about building out in the town and trying to get a handle on enrollments and, and all those kinda things. But you know, as we were talking, you know, there were things I was illustrating about how we use the budget when we talk about this and it's just really. It's really clear to me that people just really don't understand, you know, how the school budget works or. They, they always say, oh, that, that's great, that's like really smart, but they, you know, they don't understand that, you know, there are different sources of funds. There are different, you know, laws and regulations and revolving accounts and all that kinda thing, so I, I do think it's, I do think that's a hard thing. Like you said.
I mean, it didn't go down very.
No, but we broke.
No, but it still goes down. But it should, I mean, you'd think it would go up with. And the same with the school works hard to engage parents, like.
Yeah.
That went down quite a bit and I'm just wondering where that, where that problem is. And again, we don't know, you know, who's saying that, but.
What I, when I saw the, the, the backup sheets, what I noticed is that was, so it was strongly agree, agree. Disagree and strongly disagree. So there, where I saw the change was that, that, in the agree section. There were some that, about, in the number thirty seemed to keep popping up to me, the same thirty people, you know, swung from agree to disagree. And that really was the difference.
What was it, was it neutral?
Wasn't a lot of variation from strongly.
We did a neutral.
I don't think there was a lot of strongly on either end. I think it was that variation between agree to disagree and. I don't know, I don't know why.
Well, I've gotten feedback from parents, they do not feel welcome in the school.
That they don't feel welcome in the school.
Welcome in the school, so I don't know if that is what they're talking about or.
Sure, if that's what you're hearing, that's probably what they're talking about.
Yeah, or.
And that, to me, is a big, um, problem, right?
Because schools are supposed to be the most welcoming buildings that you can go to and I've always felt. That when my kids were here, that they could, you know, whether it was Pembroke or Purley or, that, you know, we were welcome. Obviously, at the middle high school, there's less opportunity to engage in the school day with the kids. But, um, Purley and Pembroke was always so welcoming to do things and.
Yeah, and I really think, I really think they still argue that. But it's a judgment, right? So, you know, I think the fact that we, we, you know, we wanna just be mindful of, of that. That that's something that some people might have feel, so we do need to reach out and, you know, just make, just be aware of it. If, more than anything else.
Right.
And I know this year at the middle school, like when they did that Italian day, the, the parents came in and I, they had four or five emails about how. They really enjoyed that and.
What was that? Peter, what was that? They, they did, like, they, the parents came in and they. Went, went around to the, remember you and I went to each of the classrooms?
It wasn't Italian, it was.
What was it called?
It was a celebration of.
They served Italian food, that's right.
Yeah, because it was the Roman Empire, they were doing projects on the empire.
Ancient cultures.
They had some food, but.
Which, which was memorable.
Depends what part of the empire, if you got Italian.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, it was, that's what I remember about it.
Was there some Greek food there too as well, like?
So, and the, and parents came by and came into their child's class and got to see the kids do presentations and it was really busy. And, and at the sixth grade, um. Celebration of growth, it was funny because Joe Patel, I'm sure would not, would not mind telling this story. Several years ago, you know, when he was at the middle high school, I remember having a conversation with him about, you know, there need to be more ways to bring. Parents into the school and there were a couple of really cool things that had been done, you know, by teachers over the years and people came. So, you know, we need to be thinking about the fact that in middle school, you know, parents still wanna be engaged and enjoy celebrating their children's work. And at the time, I remember him telling me, Carol, you just don't get it, you know, I don't think you're right, uh. So even the other day when I was in his room, he said to me, okay, I'm gonna say it to you again, I said it to you before, I'll say it again, I was wrong. I should've never told you that because when we do something and we have our kids' work shown, parents show up. And so, you know, that, you know, you always change behaviors before you change attitudes, right? So people had to see that that kind of a thing, and the sixth grade did an amazing job this year on their celebration of growth with people and they saw the benefit. Of it, so I think we can do more at the middle school with, with some of that, for sure. And when they did that event this year, it was a good example of how many people came.
I mean, we're so lucky to have some caring, invested, wonderful parents.
Absolutely.
Will come if they can, if it's possible.
So I think the teachers don't, I don't think teachers mean to, to not, you know, maybe to not have it feel welcoming, they're so busy doing their work. They don't necessarily think about it and I think sometimes they worry that the parents are expecting this big show and they're really not. They're just really wanting to come in and enjoy.
And feel invited, feel welcome.
Their kids and, and see their children, yeah, that's why.
What is the policy now, uh, Margaret, like at Pembroke, for parents to come in and help, um.
For the volunteer?
You know, yeah, with class, with classes, like math, math stations and things like that.
Well, we don't, we don't have a policy, it really.
Okay, well, what is, what's your practice? What, what happens right now?
Well, again, I, I love it when parents come in, I am surprised that parents don't feel welcome. I would wanna know, you know, specifically what happened because. I'm just gonna say, I often hear the opposite when parents come in, they feel very welcome, so. Again, I don't know if it's particular teachers who, um, designed their classroom. That it's more, you know, not open to having parents volunteer, um, some classrooms, obviously, parents do volunteer, so. I think that is.
So there are currently parent volunteers in, in certain classrooms, so I would think like, as a parent, if I had a child at Pembroke. And my child was at it, in a classroom, that the teacher didn't like that practice, I would feel. I, I wouldn't feel too happy about that if my neighbor who has, you know, Mrs. Smith next door and she's being welcomed in all the time, so. Is that something that could be more uniformed in terms of?
Well, it could, I, again, it's, I think it's, the survey is interesting because I've never had a parent approach me and say. I'm, I feel unwelcome or I wish there were more opportunities for me to come in to help. So, again, this is one way to find that out, if, if we didn't do the survey, I never would've known that, so.
So that's, it sounds like that's something we can talk, we can talk about more. Because I, I do think it's, it is about customer service, right? Just like we're talking about with food service, you know, it's, you know, what does the customer want or need? And, you know, so we, we have to balance that with what our work is, right? So we make sure that it's an enhancement to our work. You know, uh, it can't be something that makes it, you know, now we have to stop doing what we're doing to entertain the parent or. We don't, we can't worry about confidentiality, you know, people that come in have to un, understand that it's really important that. You know, stuff doesn't, doesn't end up, you know, being out on the discussion, you know?
Like we wanna assume best intentions.
That's right, we always do.
And I highly doubt that somebody's going to have a motive to come in to. You know, spy on the teacher or on the kids.
And, and. No, and I don't think that ever happens. I think sometimes though, what does happen is, and it's always, almost always very innocent. Right? So you're talking to a group of people at a party, something gets said, it's not even meant to be anything negative. But, you know, I always say to people when, when I'm talking to them, if they wanna come in or they wanna do something, I say, you know, you, you have to think about. And I do this because I interview all the subs, so I always talk about confidentiality. But I always say, you know, if you're a parent, if you wouldn't want somebody talking about your child, even the good stuff, then just don't do it about somebody else's child. Even if it's a good thing, right? Because, you know, we have to appreciate the fact that not everybody will interpret or take it in the same way. So that's, that's always, our, our teachers have to be mindful of that as well, I mean, it's not just parents. Um, but that's just something that we, we used to, when we had volunteers more regularly, we used to train, you know, the volunteers. And that was one of the things that got discussed. So we can certainly put that down as a, something we can, that came out of the survey that we can take a look.
Yeah, I, I think that, that is important because I know, like, um, when my son was in like second grade. We, it was like a weekly thing that you would go in for math and there would be a sign up, like if, if a parent couldn't make it. You could always find somebody to take that spot and the teachers never felt like they had to, they had to do anything for me. It was more like, oh, thank goodness you're here, take this group over here, you know, so I, I really think that it was, that the teachers at that time.
Founded helpful.
I, I definitely thought that.
Now, I think there's fewer people available just because they're working, I've, I've no, I've noticed a huge change. But we'll put that down as something that we'll talk more about in terms of, you know, seeing whether there's. An interest we don't know about and then what, if there is, what, what, what would be helpful, you know, to the teachers.
Right.
Sounds important, yes.
The, just a, a thought on the survey, I was thinking back to two years ago when we did it, the thought, if I remember correctly, was we were doing the ones, the school specific ones. So this is really customers of, terrible work, customers of the district, not of Pembroke. Because we didn't wanna duplicate, okay, you already told us in the Pembroke survey, we don't want that again, it's more whole umbrella.
Whole umbrella, yeah. But I suppose when people respond, they're responding from their own personal experience, which may be related to an individual school.
Right.
But I suppose when people respond, they're responding from their own personal experience, which may be related to an individual school, you know what I mean?
And I do think once parents' kids move on to the middle high school, it is known that, okay, they're at that age too, where
they don't want you there.
you just, you just, well, you just know that you're gonna see it less, and I remember when my kids were still in Pembroke, and I participated quite a bit, parents were like, do it now, because once they get to middle school, your, your kids won't want you there, as often.
It's almost like the expectation is that you just.
And there's really no need for you to do it, so that's why I think, a- and then when I talk to parents now, they'll, they feel almost like robbed, they're like, what do you mean, you used to do that, and I'm like, yeah, no, we used to, I do things like that. But I would love to still see more opportunity to see middle and high school things too, because we, uh, the creativity.
That is such a great showcase.
Um, night is awesome.
It really is.
Um, and that really, I think, is the only opportunity, other than the con- the concerts that we have, and that's if your child is in chorus or band.
Is there, is there like an art exhibit, I mean, did there?
Well, they do have the art show, they have the art show, when my kids are in art.
There's an art show, yeah.
Right, so I, I think there's, I think there's a fair amount of those kinda things, and then there's the celebrations, moving on and all that stuff. But I think it's the, it's sort of the, when you're doing a major project kind of thing, that maybe, you know, if there could be a couple more of those, like, the end of a, of a major theme or a unit or something occasionally, is there something that, you know, could be put in place, but we can certainly talk about.
I just really wish there was more people that responded to that.
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, you know, we, we wanna take it seriously, but we, you know, we also know it's a small sample, so.
Small sample size.
Makes big representation, yes, yes, it does.
Yeah.
It does.
Well, thank you for including that, thank you for all your work.
Yeah.
Next.
For the financial report?
Yeah.
You do the financial.
Okay, we have some line item transfers to take here.
Yes, we do.
Okay, did anyone have any questions about these? I have the original right here.
These items were capturing what we voted on.
We had talked about in the beginning of May when we had.
Something we saw? Thanks, so I'll make a motion to approve line item transfers two twenty-five to three twenty-four in the amount of three hundred ninety thousand nine hundred twenty-two dollars and ninety cents as presented. So moved. Uh, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Suzanne, do you wanna take that before I lose it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Did we all sign up?
Okay, and then we have the, uh, iPad lease information.
For next year.
Yep. So I'll make a motion to approve the three-year lease to Apple Inc. in the total amount of forty-three thousand three hundred ninety-six dollars and fifty cents, with three annual payments of fifteen thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars and fourteen cents. So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have the iPads for the, uh, families. Um, make a motion to approve the three-year lease to Apple Inc. in the total amount of ninety-one thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty cents, with three annual payments of thirty-two thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-five cents.
So moved. Second.
Western. Shouldn't the three payments equal the total? That's ninety-six thousand, it's the same thing for the other one.
Um, well, I checked off of their lease agreements here, so. Fifteen, well, you have the interest. Is the difference, the leases for, so for the first one, do you have the backup?
I do, yeah, so, so we, okay, and this is, this is, I guess more procedure than anything, we approve the lease amount of, without interest, but then approve the payment amount with interest?
I see, I see what you're saying, yeah, I took the, well, the payment amount has the principal and the interest in it. If you look, see the payment amount, the three payments of fifteen?
Oh, fifteen, two forty-five.
Two forty-five. Has, the first payment has no interest, the second payment has principal and interest, and the third payment. Are those numbers not correct? Those are from the lease company?
Right, yeah.
Are you questioning the total, Michael?
Yeah, no, I just, I guess I, I I guess the, the forty-three thousand dollar number on the first one is not capturing the interest.
It's not capturing the interest, you're right.
So that should really be the forty-five, seven thirty-five.
Right, I see what you're saying.
Cause otherwise we're not voting to pay the interest, which is fine with me.
That would be forty-five, seven thirty-five?
Forty-five, seven thirty-five, forty-two.
Forty-two.
That is.
And I assume the same.
I see what you're saying now, but I, I didn't pick that up.
It's a weird, yeah.
But this one is?
And that would be ninety-six, nine fifty.
Five, fifty-five.
So it should be forty-five, seven thirty-five, forty-two, and, yeah, thank you for that.
Okay, so we're changing the motions?
Yep.
Sorry about that.
And we're going with these, so these, the, the, the payment amounts are correct?
The payments amount, thirty-two, thirty-sixty-eight, yeah.
Yeah, it's the lease amount.
Yeah, and then fifteen, two forty-five, fourteen is correct, okay.
Yep, correct.
So, uh, Laura, sorry about that, I'll make a motion to approve the three-year lease to Apple Inc. in the total amount of forty-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-two cents, with three annual payments of fifteen thousand two forty-five, fourteen. Can we use the same? Motion second, is she good? Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the three-year lease to Apple in the total amount of ninety-one thousand
Nope.
No, ninety-six thousand nine fifty, fifty-five, with three annual payments of thirty-two thousand three sixteen eighty-five.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, okay, that's good.
And I asked a question, and I didn't follow up, the, did we, did we vote to open or to have a revolving account for the iPads?
We did, we did that months ago, yeah.
Okay, fair enough, I just didn't.
And the money has been.
I know, yeah, I know you said I was going, I just didn't remember voting to.
Yeah, and that's where only place it goes, yeah.
Right, so, so all the money from the parents for these iPads will go into that revolving.
The revolving, and then the lease payments will be made from the revolving account.
Right, okay, and nothing else will touch that revolving account?
No, no.
It's its own unique thing.
Yep.
Good.
Provided that everyone makes some statements, and on top.
Right.
So far, so good.
So we positive intention?
Absolutely.
A lot of people bought them, you know.
Oh, right.
Bought them outright, or one, one or two, one or two hands.
Or one or two payments, I remember you were saying that, effort, two payments, that's good, that's good. Um, okay, I, I just wanted to give a quick update for the, um, start school later. Uh, the survey results are in your packet, the survey that we just most recently administered to, uh, parents, staff, uh, and students. Just wanna quickly highlight, um, a, a, one from each of the, uh, individual surveys, if I could. So Pembroke students, we surveyed, uh, fifth and sixth grade, we had a hundred and eighty-one students, and that was pretty much a hundred percent participation, which I give kudos to the teachers and to Margaret for assisting with that. Um, at, for those grades, uh, the time that Pembroke started is forty-nine, um, point seventeen percent of the kids thought that Pembroke started at the, the right time at this point. What I did think was interesting, though, was fifty-two percent of those children did think seven thirty to two, to, um,
One thirty?
Uh, no.
No, one.
Oh, seven thirty to two fifteen for the high school, fifty-two percent of those kids also felt that that was the right time to, to, um, start school, Georgetown Middle High School. Um, but there was forty-six percent of the kids that did prefer seven thirty to one thirty. So I thought that was, that was interesting for the Pembroke kids. Uh, Pembroke parents, three hundred and fifty-two, uh, participated. Sixty-seven percent of those that participated strongly opposed, um, or opposed the change in the Pembroke schedule. Um, eighty-two percent strongly or opposed the seven thirty to one thirty, um, schedule, which I thought was interesting, because I did think the seven thirty to one thirty would have maybe not the one thirty, but I did think the flip of the schedule would have been a little more appealing. I, I wasn't expecting the eighty-two percent, I thought that was really high. Uh, Pembroke staff, eighty-six people participated, sixty-eight percent of those wanted no change to the Pembroke Day. Uh, Georgetown Middle High School students, three hundred and thirty-nine participated, so that's roughly fifty percent of the middle high school, uh, which isn't ideal, but out of those three hundred and thirty-nine students that did take the survey, sixty-six percent strongly or somewhat preferred the current schedule of seven thirty to two fifteen. Uh, Georgetown Middle High School parents, two hundred and sixty-eight took it, um, forty-two percent strongly, um, supported or supported the, uh, current schedule. Um, but forty-two percent, um, help me out on this one.
It was, it was evenly split, so forty-two percent strongly support, or supported it, and forty-two percent opposed it.
Right.
It was so, it was a very, yeah.
Yeah, isn't that, that's, that was interesting.
It was that fifteen, sixteen percent in total.
Yeah. Um, s- and the middle high school staff, sixty-eight, um, staff members took it, and sixty-seven percent of those, um, that took the survey did not want any, any change. Um, so when we did have, we, the start school leader committee met on Monday, um, and we will be coming to the school committee in the fall, one of the, the first couple of meetings, uh, because I would like the committee to come before you and, and talk about what they've been doing for the last two years, and, um, I wanna just say that I think, um, they did a great job in really looking through all the medical research, looking at our district, our community, taking all the information that we did receive at the, at the forums, and did a great job in, um, in figuring out if this is something that could work right now in Georgetown. The, one of the main issues too, that, um, that we figured out a couple of meetings ago, was that the, if a change did occur, money would have to go into, money would have to come from the budget in order to accommodate a, a time period for the buses, so the kids that took the buses would have to be, um, at the school for longer than we would like them to be, so we would have to have staff watch them. Um, and if you recall, way back when, one of the non-negotiables in the beginning of the, uh, process was that the budget could not handle anything for this change. So I appreciate the fact that, um, the superintendent figured out exactly how much that would cost, it was roughly between ten thousand and twelve thousand dollars, which is small.
Ends on which aid, which aids would, yeah, it wasn't a huge amount.
No, it wasn't, but, but, you know, we did have that non-negotiable in there. Um, so with that being said, we did, at that point, we figured there was really no reason to have another meeting in the summer to talk about this again, to figure out what we were gonna say to the, to the school committee, so we did take a vote, and it was a unanimous vote to make a recommendation to you that no change would be made. Um, but again, I, I would like them to come in front of the, um, in front of the full committee, just to, to talk about all the things that have gone on. And I wanna, uh, also say that I think it was a, a great, uh, opportunity for the public to weigh in, I think a lot of people uh, felt strongly, you know, on both sides, and, and I, I wish it could have been a little, um, the process, I wish it could have been just a little better handled in a lot of, in a lot of ways, because it wasn't, this wasn't meant to have any one set of people feel like it was punishment, or that we were, um, feeling that one set of students needed more than another set, or that we were taking something away from one set of students to give to another, that was never the intention. Um, you know, the medical research was there, and I think the committee did a great job in, in recognizing that. Um, so with that being said, I, I, I am hap- again, I am happy with the process, I think the process.
Yeah, the process.
And I wanna say, you did an amazing job.
Yeah, yeah.
You really did, I mean, the research that you did to disseminate to the committee to look over, and getting, um, I don't remember her name, to come.
Dr. Owens.
Dr. Owens, Judith Owens to come and speak with the community, I think you did a really great job, um, doing all that research, and that was a lot of research.
You put a lot of time in the party, you put a lot of time to go into the.
You took a lot of time and effort into that.
Well, yeah, a lot of people did, and I appreciate that, I, I appreciate.
Yeah, I just wanna say, we appreciate the work that you did, because that was a lot of work, so thank you.
I know.
Yeah, I appreciate.
And I know it came from a place of deep caring about all of our students and their, their health and their welfare, and
Absolutely.
Right.
You know, I, I know the time and effort spent exploring all of the logistical alternatives was enormous.
Right, and, and meeting with all the people you met with, I mean.
Talking to the communities, absolutely, so.
And it was just a, it, it was, um, it was just, it seemed like every meeting, we were like, oh, we forgot, we know, we gotta think of this, and we, you know, you have your main things, but then other things pop up, but, you know, I, I am, am very happy with the entire process. Because i- I think if it went any different and the vote went the way it was, then I would feel like, well, we didn't explore everything, and I, I feel that we've explored everything, we really beat some, you know, it, it just, at this point in time, it just would not be, um, okay to, to make any changes, so, uh, again, the whole committee hopefully will be here in the fall, and they can give you a brief update.
Great.
Um, so can we get those on the district one?
Yeah, I mentioned that to Michael today.
Yes, yeah.
Is that easily?
Yeah, it's, we just need to
Okay, just something.
So that it doesn't look like this, we just need to, to clean it up a little bit, but it's definitely doable.
Yeah, the empty, the zeros.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Yeah, we were looking for, like, literally just, like, where people could, so we, everybody gets a summary. And then there, the links are underneath it, so like, if you just wanted to look at the Pembroke parents, you could just click on that.
Mm-hmm. Click on that, yeah, there's a way.
Yeah, that's what we've, yeah.
And, and is there, there's an SSL link now on the school committee dropdown on the school website, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, right, correct, I don't, yeah, yeah, is that where this could go?
Yeah, there is. Well, well, that's what we talked at.
I mean, it could, yeah.
I don't know, I, that isn't so noticeable?
I was gonna put it on my, 'cause I told people on the blog that I was gonna, so I said to Michael, I wanna, just, you know, as promised, here's the results of the survey.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
And then we, I talked briefly with Michael today about, you know, where we put up on the actual, up above on the top of the page, you, you know, where the district, click, if you wanna take the district satisfaction, click here. It might be just worth it for, you know, for a couple of weeks to put, you know, di- districts out, yeah, just, district, you know, survey res- SS, start school later results.
Survey results.
So people, if they, 'cause I, if I keep posting on my blog, it keeps going down, right, where that would just be sort of a stable
Right. It would stay there.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Thing. Right, and your blog, I do appreciate that you put that, I, as soon as I came home from the meeting, I updated the Facebook page.
Yeah, good.
Um, but I think more people saw it on your blog, because then people transferred, you know, put a book on your blog, yeah.
It was on Facebook, and I tweeted it, yeah. Well, you know, and it was funny, because I, you know, I've been, I've been out at the schools the last few days of school, and many people said, you know, thank you for putting that up there quickly, because before the school year ends, you know, people were just kinda wondering if there was some closure on it, so. I think it, you know, I think it was, and I just thought in that blog, it was really important to explain to people what the process was, so that, you know, they didn't think it was done lightly, I mean, it was definitely a lot, a lot of thought, a lot of, a lot of meetings, a lot of
Yeah.
care to, to look at everything.
But, but to be clear too, 'cause I did get a couple of emails that asked me, okay, so what is the process, so the process is that the start school later committee makes a recommendation to the school committee, so it is the school committee's final, you know, vote, but that, you know, to, to go uh, to take a, to have this committee go out and explore everything, and then have them come back with a recommendation, and then the school committee to not take the recommendation, I was trying to explain that to, to people, because they're like, okay, so, so it still could happen. But very unlikely would that happen, that we would.
After you have a committee like that.
You'd have to take a change, you'd have to take a vote to change it.
Mm-huh.
I don't know that you have to take a vote to not change it, I think Bar- I think Barbie's correctly, the courteous thing to do is give you the chance to
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
hear from the committee, but honestly, I think your, your job would have been, if you were, if they were gonna recommend a change,
Then it would be, take the recommendation.
you would have had to, yeah, you had to, would have had to take a formal vote on it.
Right. So, um, thank you.
I'm Maria Barbie, that was good. It's a lot of paper. It is a lot of paper. I just wanna make sure, I, did, did you check out the stuff that, I thought we got some great coverage on graduation? Um, from, uh, Pete Chianca and Sally Applegate. Uh, I know Pete had a daughter who was, you know, who was graduating this year, but, you know, I think that the paper really tries hard to, you know, feature all of the great things that are going on in the school, so. Yeah, I felt like I should really mention that publicly, because I do think he, you know, he and Sally really did a nice job on that particular, it's a great day.
Totally agree.
Okay, then we have another donation?
We do.
We do, right, and Liz talked about this.
That's the, that's the home donation.
Right, so, the donation is always, already has been officially accepted by us though, right? I mean, not by the school committee, but.
Well, no, no, we, no, we didn't. Well, no, no, we, no, we didn't, we, we said we had to have it approved by the school committee, so we don't have anything physically.
Okay. Okay.
They said they wanted to give us five hundred dollars or something in tools.
Okay.
Small hand tools, which we need.
Well, that's very kind of them to do that. Um, I will make a motion to accept the five hundred dollar tool donation from Home Depot, uh, with much gratitude. So moved?
Second.
You got it. Discussion? All in favor?
Uh, hi.
Yeah, that's very nice.
A question on, again, I feel like I just had to procedure questions. The, I mean, they were talking about getting donations and partnerships and all these things from different people. Some of them being buckets of parts and whatever. From a school committee accepting donations perspective,
Yeah.
how is that, cause we haven't, we haven't accepted any of those donations.
Well, there, there are, I don't, I don't know what's, yeah, we did it through Survey Monkey, you know, so now what is that? Not Survey Monkey, what is that?
Yeah.
Hmm. Yeah, sign up genius.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, I don't.
I guess you could do, I guess you could accept me, you know, like I, I.
I know.
It's more procedure than.
I didn't even, yeah, I think, I don't know the answer to that, Michael. You know, I mean, it's something like a company that makes a donation or we get a, that seems more clear cut to me.
Right, cause we don't, we always get parents dropping off different things.
We don't think, yeah.
Even paper towels and things like that, people.
Yeah, 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 we don't accept those.
Yeah, or like at the beginning of the year, the supply list.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, yeah, we don't really, yeah.
Right, right.
But can we consider that to be the same?
Yeah, so maybe that's not the same bucket, but that's a good question. It's, I think it's more like if, like the light department gives us a donation or, you know,
Oh, yeah. We're here. Right. Oh, yeah.
I wonder if it's like a monetary amount of what it's worth.
I mean, actually, yeah.
You know, like a fifty, cause the teacher, like the teacher gifts, it's fifty.
I'll have to look, I'll have to look at the, the, the policy on it, cause I think it, I think you accept any monetary, I, I think the policy is that I can, I can accept any educational gifts on your behalf.
Okay.
If it changes the school facility, then you have responsibility, and if it's a cash donation, you have to accept all cash donations. I'm, I'm pretty sure, I'll get, I'll put the policy, but that's what I believe.
Okay, which actually answers, cause my next question was gonna be, the sewing machines, for example.
Yeah.
Ten years from now, are we gonna surplus them? And can we surplus something that we didn't accept?
That we didn't, oh, that the school committee didn't accept.
Yeah.
Well, didn't you accept that? I thought you did accept.
Unless you did.
Yeah, we did accept that.
I've lost track, no.
So we, you did accept.
I remember. No, I thought you did.
I thought you did.
I probably did, yeah, we did. The sewing machine, yeah.
I know, I, I do. It was part of, it was part of the cash donation.
Yeah.
Said that, there's two more coming.
Yeah, you did accept the donation for that.
I think we did.
Bad example, but you noted.
Cause it was.
It was part of the cash, they had a donation.
Yeah, they, they donated more money.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, if, if they outlive their useful life, you know, then we would surplus them.
Aren't they supposed, that, that's supposed to be a.
Yeah.
Maker space.
What? Put it in the maker space?
Just move on the opposite side of the, of the, yeah.
I cleaned out my, my closet over the, my, uh, garage over the weekend. I had two towers, you know, like computer towers,
Yeah.
and I brought them in, you know, so they'll go in the maker space because pe- kids like to take them apart, yeah.
Yeah, they take them apart, put them back together.
I know, and folks for, um, Camp Invention have been asking for donations of DVD players.
Yes.
Oh. How have you been getting that communication?
On Facebook, by individual people.
Facebook, oh, okay. Okay, okay.
So, from the messages I've seen, it's like the same message, but I think each student has to bring their own.
Oh, okay.
That's probably what happens, I probably reached out to everybody who registered and said, you know, you need, there are things you have to bring.
Right, okay.
That we're really excited about that ninety kids.
That's, yeah, that is great.
That's a, that's a, that says something.
And are they all Georgetown kids? Because they can be from anywhere.
You know what? I don't know, but I think most are.
Yeah, because the, that Camp Invention website will tell you like what the closest one is.
Right, right, and they, yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah.
And she does a great job of that. They both do, it's Heidi and Christine.
Christine, yeah, yeah.
It's good.
Four or five teachers, that, I mean, they had to add more teachers this year because there were more kids.
Wow.
They have a ra- they have a ratio of how many kids.
Right, of how many kids to an adult.
Right. So, before we go, can we just talk about this?
Yep. Sure.
Because the, uh, fiscal year is coming to a rapid.
Coming to a rapid end and.
So I asked Suzanne to just write this little memo for you, just to explain, so we had a few things happened, you know, special ed, I, I did encumber a couple of, well, we had a couple of kids who actually physically moved out of the district in the last month and a half, two months. Um, so, and Jack had, you know, he always encum- encumbered the transportation, um, uh, POs, you know, sometimes kids don't go every day to the place where, you know, but we assume they're going to. So, um, some of that, some of that, the funds that we're, we're seeing are coming from that. Um, and then, so we're just giving you some ideas about what we'd like to do with the money, you know, obviously we need your support for it. As I said, the food service, um, ends up in a ten thousand dollar deficit, but actually, I think, she's, they, they closed the year with a ten thou- a positive ten.
Positive ten, but then she had about twenty thousand dollars worth of, um, between her prepaid account and her bad debt.
Mm-hmm. That's where they prepaid.
So the prepaid account meaning people ask for the, the funds?
People that are, no.
No, but they're, the funds are there.
They're on account, they're on account for next year.
They're on account for the children for next year.
Oh, because they have.
So how much do we have, I'm just, you made me think. I know it, last year when we talked about bad debt, it was a very significant number.
It was like fifteen, now I think it's down to around five. I can get you specific numbers.
It was fifteen?
Yes.
At the beginning, at your last year.
Yeah, and it's now five.
Last year, right. Now it's in the four or five and, does that include the debt that we'll never collect from people who moved?
Yes, that doesn't.
So that, that I think was about.
That does include it?
Yeah, that was about two thousand dollars if I remember correctly, so we probably have outstanding about three thousand.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
We should actually just break that off.
And not keep on, yeah.
It's not real anymore, yeah.
So we probably have about three thousand.
How do we do that? So you would just, like.
We've already covered it.
Well, we have to cover it, um, we still, you know, we can go after it.
Right. But in terms of getting it up.
Yeah, we'd have to just.
Well, we.
No, but how do you actually, like Michael said, just count it as a loss and not continue to?
We probably just have to, um,
It's an accounting entry.
Have the town do some sort of entry, take it off the books.
Yeah. To just like, keep it.
Yeah.
Just remove that, delete that.
It would be an expense, a bad debt expense.
So I'm, I mean, I'm feeling like, you know, with the participation rates and the things that we've had so far to, to get through the year, you know, we're gonna.
And we collected more money too, so that, that made up a difference.
Right, we did collect more money, so I'm hoping with some of the changes that we're making, that that's, that, that this is gonna go in the right direction, that we won't.
So are you, so the minus, the, the ten thirty, ten three eighty-nine deficit,
Yeah.
are you proposing, suggesting zeroing out the account? What are you proposing in terms of food service budget?
No, so the food service, um, revolving account has to have a balance to cover the prepaid accounts and the bad debt.
So it is cover, okay. My question was gonna be, are we, we are gonna have?
It's covered that.
Yes, so in order to do that, we have to, we're gonna move ten thousand dollars worth of food service expenses over to the budget.
Into budget.
And that will leave, cause it, we ended up with ten, so we need ten more to cover the twenty.
Okay. Okay.
So, the little surplus we have will be, we have to take ten thousand dollars from that total.
Right.
So that, and then the athletic, the athletic budget, you know, has a hundred and seventy-four dollars in it.
Well, that, that's the revolving account.
On the revolving account, but we, we did come up short in the budget.
That's a problem.
Yeah, the overall athletic budget, what I meant by overall athletic budget is budget and the athletic revolving account.
Well.
The revolving account.
Right.
So, we ended up in a deficit of fourteen thousand, and that was with leaving a hundred and seventy-four in the revolving account, um, and moving final invoices of a ninety-eight hundred to budget in order to leave that hundred and seventy-four dollars.
And I asked Suzanne, and I'm gonna ask Julie, uh, tomorrow if she can just give me a three-year history because that number fourteen thousand seems really familiar to me, that that tends to be where the deficit falls.
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't quite know, I, I think it's a structural issue.
Right.
Um, but I, I, I just would feel better knowing, like, if she could just tell me, you know, you give me three to five years, just what, how has that finished? Because.
Well, and, I mean, I would also love to know what, what that fourteen thousand dollars, it, it's one thing to say we had a deficit, but what's,
What, where were the other?
We have items, what, what missed.
Right.
Would, would that be easy for us to?
Well, I, I would like to do that at the end because we still have moving parts.
Just a moving, yeah.
We're still moving parts.
There's definitely moving parts for the last couple of weeks.
So we, that's something we, we know we have to, we have to cover.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then, you know, we, we talked about, well, what are, so our, our proposal I believe was, we said we were, we would want to start, take ten thousand dollars with us and at least be able to start the year in athletics with ten thousand dollars, hoping that's gonna reduce, you know, the structural deficit anyway, you know, next year. Um,
The deficit, right.
that just made sense to us, you know, in the.
It doesn't reduce the struct- if it's a structural deficit.
It doesn't reduce the struc- but if, but if we're, if we're losing, if we're fourteen thousand dollars in the hole consistently,
Correct.
and there's ten thousand to start with, you know, the likelihood unless we, unless we do something wrong,
Correct. Then it should be a minus.
that, we, we shouldn't have as big a, as big a deficit, that's, and if we can make eight thousand, I mean, every parking space was sold,
Yeah. Yes.
Cause he didn't start the year this year with much.
we can make eight thousand dollars, you know, if we can run a couple of other fundraiser kinds of things, we still wanna exp- explore the stuff on the fences.
Minimum. Right.
You know, we might be able to get a few, we might be able to get, you know, a few more dollars, you know, and at least try to put something, you know.
And his booster account is, you know, pretty much depleted, so.
Yeah, he, right, cause that's what, that's what Suzanne and I were talking about that today, like, he had some money that was set up in the, you know, in the, in account that he had.
Oh, he must have boosters account, you know, it, do you?
Well, well, we, it comes through, it comes through.
It comes through, it's accounting.
Accounting office and, and then.
So it is part of the district?
Yes, but, but it got expenses that.
Boosters.
Well, it's not part of the, well, it's not part of the district.
We don't run it. We, we just, we house it.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so who, who does manage it?
Why do we house it?
What?
Why do we hold the money for a?
Well, we keep track of how much because when they wanna spend it, it has to come through, it comes through like the student activities.
To fundraising groups.
Interesting. I would just assume that we, a separate entity, not.
Yeah, we pour it through them.
It, it, well, well, you know what? I think we're using the wrong expression. I don't really think it's the boost, it's not the all sports boosters, each sport.
I think these were old.
Tends to have the count. Parents that ri- you know, they raise money for their sports. That's, I think, the account money she's talking about. I don't think it's, I don't think it's.
Oh, like when they do car washes, yeah, fundraisers, the sports boosters, the all sports boosters has its own, it's a, it's a.
Right, that's for the, that's for the lighting.
Sports boosters, the all sports boosters has its own, it's a, it's a.
Okay.
Um, uniforms.
That's a separate entity, okay.
That's a PTA.
Right.
Right, has a.
You know, you could make, there could be money to be made on, uh, Peter's lovely sign.
Mm-hmm.
If somebody wants to pay a fee to, whether it's advertising.
To advertise, yeah.
Oh, the electronic sign?
Or wish somebody a happy birthday, whatever, you know, you could collect money, that could make.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep.
We talked about doing, seeing about, planning some kind of athletic fundraiser, like maybe a road race or some, you know what I mean, something like that that could be for the.
That's no easy feat.
Yeah, it's not an easy feat, but we're, but we were trying to think that we were trying to.
It is.
No.
Something like, parents against child, football, baseball, something like that.
Well, yeah, but wiffle ball tournaments or something.
Teacher against student football, I think, yeah.
Right now, I'm, I'm just trying to keep guy from quitting, right, so, so, um, you know, I don't wanna put too many, too many, um, things, but.
Right. But I do think those are good ideas, that the parent, um, given the parent, we have a booster.
Yeah.
So that's why, yeah, staff and the kids.
Have a lot of parents wanting to play that.
Yeah, wasn't there a basketball game at the end of the year?
Absolutely.
If we had a boot, sports booster, that, that kind of stuff, a booster's probably playing.
The teachers, yeah, staff, yeah, I think that's fun.
They have a blast.
But do we, Masco does that, our, our treaty does that, but.
I don't know that anyone paid money for it, but.
But is there, I remember when we talked about this before, each sport wants to raise money for their sport.
Yes.
They do, that's what happens.
Versus a whole sports boosters, is that right?
Yes.
But I, yes, but if you did an event for the whole overall athletic program where everybody could participate, you might have more luck with something like that.
Right. Right.
One shot, one day.
It's, it's, it's kinda the parking lot.
Yeah.
Paint the space.
Yeah.
Concept.
Right. Yeah, so, anyway.
Is, is there, is circuit breaker, cause essentially it's special education money, is there a reason not to put it back in circuit breaker, which I know is also another ongoing concern?
Well, we have to, we can't really put it back into circuit breaker, we have to spend last year's circuit breaker, so we did that. We didn't go into what we received this year.
We did not, okay, okay.
So, we, what we had, what we received this year, we have for next year.
Which is the way it's supposed to be, which is the way it's supposed to work.
That's right, that's how we like to see it, yeah, right. So, our thought was, you know, we could, we don't, we probably don't see this kind of thing, we don't see this thing hardly ever, is, you know, could we invest some of the money in, you know, just the cafeteria things that we wanna do, you know, maybe we could get some equipment we might not have been able to get or something we would have to wait a couple of years to do. Um, and then again, the maker space, you know, if, if we wanna buy some of this, these electronic kind of things that people aren't, unless it's a company, people aren't most likely to donate it. You know, they, it's just not something that, you know, everybody can see their way to do. Um, so, we're just making a proposal that we think that we can accomplish a lot of the things we, we would hope to accomplish with, with some funds.
And we have those funds?
Well, that's what Suzanne is saying, we're closing.
As of, as of, as of three o'clock today, when we ran the reports, uh.
May I ask a question?
Of course, sure.
Um, this was brought up to me before by someone else, and, and the question is, i- is it legal to take special education money and use it for another purpose?
Well, I don't think it's, I don't know, I don't think it's special ed money, Tom, you know, I mean, we, we have.
Look, that's what I'm hearing, it's from money that came out of special education transportation surplus, is that where the money came from, what's, was surplus?
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's in the, money in the general fund budget, so it's just unencumbered money that wasn't used.
Right.
So it's not from the special education budget, it's from?
It's from the district's budget.
From the district budget, okay.
Yeah.
Right.
All right, so that, that, yeah, that helps me, that, that was the question that was raised to me, um.
Does that help? Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Great.
Uh, so that, that's clarification.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so as of three o'clock today, this is the information that you have.
So this is why, you know, this is still a moving target, um, we still have a lot of.
Six hours.
But we don't see you again until July.
I know, yeah.
Yeah, we have a lot of money encumbered, you know, it's still encumbered, we have invoices coming in, um, you know.
And July one's gonna come before. So, so some of these things may change just slightly, but we just, we just want.
They might change just slightly, exactly. But this is what we see, this is what we saw today.
So from a, this is probably a silly question, but from a spending twenty-five thousand dollars in cafeteria example,
Yeah.
do we need invoices in the next eight days or whatever that is?
Mm-hmm, yes, yes, absolutely.
That's why this is important tonight.
Yeah.
Everything has to be delivered in invoice by next Friday.
We have, we have to literally. Right, so we have to go deliver to do the fifty machine, yeah.
Right.
And so if that can't happen, then that won't happen.
Right.
I see.
Right.
Right.
Um, that's why, you know, I suggested also prepay some tuition.
We, we can prepay a special ed tuition that we could do.
Mm-hmm.
We can do up to three months, um, and Jack can get those invoices.
So we do.
So do we need to make a motion?
That's a headache.
Um.
Or, or is this just, well, yes.
Yeah, this is, this is.
This is just, no, I think.
Well, don't you think we should make a motion to?
It would be the line item transfers, it would be like, you didn't, yeah.
Well, it'd be in the line item transfers at the end.
I was, did it, okay. Okay.
Oh.
Right.
But we would just need agreement that you're, you know, you're, you're in concept, yeah.
In concept.
We understand what's happening.
Yeah.
Where, coming from where it's going.
No surprises.
No surprises, right. No surprises.
Okay, so you are going to use the balance to prepay a tuition.
Right. If, what, once we know how much, okay?
Depending on, right, I mean, I think that would be an area to.
Right.
To chip one out, yeah.
Right, because we don't know what next year's gonna look like.
We, we don't know next year, right, we might have more kids or less kids.
Maybe for a.
Yeah, we don't know.
We budget based on what we know, but things can change.
It's weird that you can prepay tuition by.
Okay.
They do allow that.
You can't do anything else.
I know.
Well, Bill took your money, really.
Welcome to municipal.
Well, no, I know they will, but, but that it's allowed in municipal finance.
Yes, right.
Right, right. Maybe in special education.
Municipal financing is different, is different.
Well, thank you for up, for giving us this information.
Yeah.
Yes, you're welcome.
We don't have to vote on that.
Uh.
Well, we will eventually, but. Eventually.
I do wanna ask the committee if, um, we, last meeting, we talked about when we were gonna meet in July and August. I wanted to see if, instead of July twenty-sixth, if July twenty-fifth was available.
I'm sure it probably is.
What day of the week is that, Barbie?
I don't, Tuesday.
Not.
Think that I was available.
Are you not available on the twenty-fifth? Or are you?
I don't.
And, and you need to present.
Well, we have to close the budget.
Close the budget, right.
Yeah.
All right, well, the twenty-sixth is fine. I mean, everything's gonna be a zero, so, you know, but.
I did notice a lot of twelve cent, twelve cent transfers going on in the, in the salad lines.
Yeah, well, those will clean up the, uh, the teachers, yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, I did, I do have something on the twenty-fifth.
What were you asking, Barbara? You what?
I was the one that couldn't make it that night, yeah.
That couldn't do the twenty-fifth, okay.
Okay, so we, do you wanna look at?
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
I, I can't do the twenty-seventh, um, or the twenty-fourth.
Well, there's.
Yeah.
Okay, do you wanna try something the week before?
No, I'm away.
Oh, you're away, oh, oh, that's right, you're away.
Okay.
Lucky you.
So I, I just may be a little bit late to that meeting.
I'm saying on Friday.
Yeah, okay.
Sure, what did you, Friday?
The twenty-eighth, I think so.
Michael wants Friday, only one to show up.
I know, I would.
Michael will be the only, but there won't be a quorum.
I'll vote five times.
All right, okay, so we're sticking with that.
Okay, keep it at the twenty-sixth.
All right.
I'll keep it.
Great.
Okay, so I think we're good, right?
Just what we have to do in executive, right, we do, very quickly.
Yes.
Um, you know, I, I just wanted to say, Tom is, Tom is here, so on June twenty-eighth, the Georgetown CPAC is gonna have a meeting to announce.
Here we go.
Right, yeah, can I, can I, just to give you guys a, a quick CPAC update?
When is that?
I know it's the end of the night, but.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As long as it's entertaining.
In five minutes.
So, yeah, Shining Star Awards and election will be at, uh, June twenty-eighth at, uh, Jeffrey Maria's.
What was that again, Tom?
The Shining Star, uh, awards and, uh, election will be, uh, June twenty-eighth, Wednesday, seven to nine, at, uh, Jeffrey Maria's.
Yeah, I got that.
They're hosting us, uh, giving us, uh, ice cream and, uh, great, and it's also, um,
Oh, that's nice, yeah.
being sponsored by, uh, the George Home Improvements, who was our first sponsor and a, uh, sponsor of three of our events.
Oh.
So, um, they've been great to us. So, um, they've been great to us, so we're really looking forward to that. We'll also be, um, donating a chair, two chairs that we purchased, the Penbrook School Library, the Yoga Balance Chairs.
Oh, yeah.
Um, we did a lot of research and, um, some kids need alternative seating.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, so we'll, we'll be, uh, giving, uh, two chairs to the school district.
So do we need to, we would need to.
Now, that, you would need to accept donations.
To accept that donation.
Okay, uh, so when do you wanna vote on that?
Okay.
Next time?
Yeah, so they.
When are you giving it to them?
Uh, June twenty-eighth.
Oh, that's when you're gonna, oh.
That's where we, we have them, uh, they're in a box, uh, you wanna see what they look like?
Well, we trust you, the, the, the question is.
Have a picture open to you.
Can you, can you approve it tonight?
Can we approve it tonight?
Yeah.
Here you go, here's a picture, uh, on a text message, you, you wanna pass that around and?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
That's a very nice donation.
I know they have a lot of cool chairs at Crest, so I kinda have.
Yeah, they do, they have all, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, those are great. And, and what, what are they called?
Uh, Yoga Balance Chairs is, I think, the official title.
Yoga Balance, I wanna know what they're called, to be frank. Well, and I know some teachers at Penbrook have been practicing flexible seating.
Oh, yeah. They have those, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, there are some in some of the classrooms I've seen.
It's like so much fun.
Right, and not only like those, but all different kinds of.
Yeah, they sit on. Very cool.
Yeah, that's neat.
Yeah, and kids can sit.
It's building, it's your core.
It's building, it's, it's stabilizing your core.
But yeah, for the purpose too, for children that get a little.
They just need to move.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but, right?
Well, and some kids need to stand.
But it's also, Barbie, it's also built your core.
And some kids need to stand.
I need one of those.
Yeah. I know, can you arrange to have them in our offices, please?
Uh, if you're there for reading time, it, they're for the kids.
You have a desk that goes up.
They're for the kids, right.
These things.
We'll be, mul, multiply. We'll be sending the school.
So I, I don't know, you guys decided when you, uh, wanna vote on those?
We can accept, they're thinking maybe tonight?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you wanna do that now, and I have a couple of little things here?
Yeah, sure, um, I don't need any monetary, not just that, just the chair. Okay, so I will make a motion to accept two Yoga Balance Chairs from the CPAC.
Yes.
Organization, um, with much gratitude, thank you very much, Sadiq.
So moved.
Second? Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much.
That's very nice, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so, uh, the other thing is, for, for next fall, uh, I'm pretty excited about this, uh, in, in the Boston area, we have some of the best researchers in reading and dyslexia, probably in the world. And I'm putting together, uh, uh, struggling reading workshop series, uh, with, uh, Dr. Nettie and Gabb. We'll be presenting one night on the neuroscience, uh, Dr. Joanna Cristolulo will be presenting on the development of reading, and, um, uh, Dr. Melissa Orkin will come and present on effective solutions for, uh, motivating struggling readers, and Dr. Tiffany Hogan will present on comprehension. Um, I'm pretty excited about this, uh, because, um, you know, these people are the best in the business,
Yeah.
and they're coming here and they're doing this for us pro bono. Uh, we might try to get a sponsor, give them some travel stipends, still trying to work out the, uh, details of that.
And when will that be?
Uh, we don't have the date yet. It will be in the fall, there'll be four separate, and they'll be at the library, we're, uh, partnering with the library on this, um, so, they have a.
They close down at eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock, yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, be, um, at the library. Uh, they've been great to us, I've been down to the library a bunch of times, and, um, so, yeah, really looking forward to that. And, uh, just the last thing is, um, well, I'll pass this, you guys can, I only have one left, I was at the State House today. Uh, there's two, four bills, two in the House and two in the Senate around dyslexia screening.
Wow.
Um, that every child in Massachusetts would be screened, uh, for dyslexia. And other states have, uh, passed laws around this, New Jersey, Rhode Island, uh, New Hampshire, um, Connecticut, Texas, Maine. So, uh, it's, it's going to pass, I think, in Massachusetts, not this year, uh, and in the future. Um, Barbara Little Italian is supportive of this, Bruce Tar, um, and, uh, sorry, I need water. The, um, uh, I spent some time today, they had a, a meeting, uh, where different people presented, Dr. Gobb presented, uh, Barbara Little Italian spoke, and, um, then we went to different, uh, offices, and, uh, I'm not sure where, um, uh, Lenny Maris stands on the bill, but, uh, people I've met at the State House, Jim Moselli from Wilmington is supporting it, um, Representative Billy Otis from Danvers is, uh, supporting this, and, uh, so, I'm pretty excited about that, um, hope you guys will, uh, research this.
Dead, yeah.
I know you've, uh, supported things in the past, and I hope, you know, individually or as a committee, you'll also, um, give your support, um, to this piece of legislation or these pieces.
So it would help to send letters to, to them.
Well, I think the biggest thing would be to call, uh, Lenny Maris, I'm not sure where he stands on it, I haven't connected with him. I, I was at his office today, I missed him, um, so, um, hopefully he'll, uh, he'll support this as well.
That's great.
Great.
Any questions?
No, no, I think you're doing a great job.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm really excited about the dyslexia, uh, legislation, and, um, you know, hopefully it'll pass. The, um, there's a problem in New Jersey where they didn't specify the testing tools to be used. So every town and city, as I understand it, is using their own kinda testing tools. There are research-based testing tools, um, for dyslexia, you know, to, for screening, and, um, actually, Dr. Gobb can, uh, speak about that at length. She does amazing stuff, by the way, uh, she does brain scans and.
So all the doctors that you're having on that four-part series, are they all local, are they all within Massachusetts?
Boston, yeah.
They're all Boston?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
Awesome.
Very nice.
So you, you can keep that, uh, if someone wants to, um.
Okay, we'll keep it, perfect.
So, and this CPAC will be working over the summer on a, a letter to send out to all the special education parents?
Decoding. Yeah, so we work, we send out a letter every year, and, uh, we haven't started working on that, we're kinda working on our last event and, uh, figuring out what are the, whether the, uh, trainings we're gonna have and, um.
Right, 'cause you'd wanna have a semblance of a schedule before you did that, so.
Right, and I'm, uh.
I'll hold it with all the other stuff.
Busy, uh, putting together this reading workshop, it's, uh, you know, a lot of work, so.
Yeah. Yeah, they are, they are a long work.
So you receive the information from the district in terms of the, the database that you use to send out information to special ed parents?
We write a letter and we give it to, to the school district and the school district sends it out, yeah.
And then they disseminate it.
That, that's the only time in the school year that, um, the.
They would do that.
They would do that, it's, the director of special education sends it out.
Okay. Okay.
So we've had a great year, we're looking for a, a great year next year.
Yeah, that's a great year.
And, um, you know, um, I'd love to connect with you guys some more, hope you can come to some of our events, and if you have any questions from, uh, you know, regarding parent perspectives on special education, you can talk, contact me anytime.
Okay.
Love to talk with you all. Um, I know there's multiple perspectives on special education, and, uh, I certainly have my own.
Sure.
We all have special, special perspectives, right.
We do.
Well, thank you, Tom, for all the work you have done this year, you and the CPAC.
I know.
You may be reinvigorated it, which is, uh, was no small, was no small task.
Oh, it's doing fantastic.
Very exciting.
Special thanks to, uh, Jen Burgey and Chantel and, uh, Desiree, uh, they, they, they're great this year.
Mm-hmm.
So, and all the people, all the parents who've participated, they've been wonderful.
They've got an awesome team there.
That's great.
Thank you, thank you all very much.
Sure.
And thanks for, uh, accepting the donation.
Thank you.
What a donation.
The donation.
It's very, very generous.
We're gonna do with the chairs.
It is, very thoughtful.
Suzanne will be using it.
Much as do I, and, and, you know, people, those chairs.
All right, have a good night, have a great summer, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, that'll be fun. Okay, so, um, at this point, I will make a motion to adjourn, um, at nine forty-five a, uh, P.M., nine forty-five P.M. We, uh, do need to have an executive session this evening, so we will be going into executive, executive session, not returning to, um, open meeting, going into executive session under chapter, uh, thirty A, section twenty-one, for the purpose of union negotiations.
So moved, or aye, or vote, what?
Second.
I forget, is this a roll call?
It's so moved, so moved, and then second, and then vote.
Sorry.
Aye.
So moved, second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call, you need roll call.
Roll call.
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
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 You're there.
Thank you, good night.